Good evening. I call to order this meeting of the Gladstone City Council for Tuesday, November 12th, 2024. It's 6:30 PM. The city of Gladstone, Oregon is situated on the traditional lands of the Clackamas, Chinook, and Kalapooia tribes. The rich history, culture, and contributions of these indigenous peoples who stewarded this land for thousands of years is worthy of acknowledgement and appreciation. I am grateful for the opportunity to live, work, and gather on these ancestral lands, and to commit to learning from the wisdom and resilience of the indigenous communities that continue to shape the region. Moving forward, I want us all to strive to build relationships based on mutual respect, understanding, and collaboration with one another, to work together to protect and preserve the natural beauty and resources of this area, and to ensure a sustainable and harmonious future for all who call Gladstone home. The city of Gladstone is abiding by guidelines set forth in House Bill 2560, which requires the governing body of the public body, to the extent reasonably possible, to make all meetings accessible remotely through technological means, and to provide opportunity for members of the general public to remotely submit oral and written testimony during meetings, to the extent in-person oral and written testimony is allowed. Therefore, this meeting will be open to the public both in-person and virtually using the Zoom platform. The Zoom instructions are on the agenda for the meeting. If members of the public wanted to comment on an agenda item, either virtually or in-person, they were to have emailed their comments or their request to speak to the city recorder prior to noon today. Individuals attending in-person may submit a speaker card to the city recorder early in the meeting. Comments are limited to three minutes. City Council will also have Gladstone City event announcements during the meeting and business from the audience at the end of the meeting. To speak during either time, virtually or in-person, please mail the city -- again, you were to have mailed the city recorder prior to noon today with your name, topic of discussion, city residents. Individuals attending in-person may submit a speaker card to the city recorder prior to the beginning of the meeting. Comments are, again, limited to three minutes. Tammy, will you call the roll, please?
Counselor Huckabee.
Present.
Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Counselor Blau.
Present.
Counselor Cook.
Present.
Counselor Roberts.
Present.
Counselor Garlington.
Here.
Mayor Milch.
Present. Please stand for the flag.
Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We've had the occasion on several meetings this year to swear in new officers to our Gladstone Police Department. Tonight is, again, one of those nights. I'm glad to see new officers and their families in attendance, and I will turn this over to the chief and the city administrator for this important ceremony.
Can I talk loud tonight? Can turn it on a little bit? Okay, thank you. Counselor, Mr. Mayor, first I'd like to -- we're going to introduce two -- one new individual and one promotion. So, the first one I'm going to call up is Lieutenant Eric McNabb. Please come up. First, I'd like to introduce you and let you know a little bit about Lieutenant McNabb. Lieutenant McNabb is a 21-year veteran of the Dallas Police Department, holding the rank of Sergeant before coming to Gladstone. His experience includes criminal investigations, narcotics, code enforcement, managing and supervising personnel, and overall organizational development. Lieutenant McNabb is married to his wife Angie, who's present, and they share five children between them. His hobby includes spending time with family, camping, and at the beach. Lieutenant McNabb holds an undergraduate degree from Western Oregon University, which will appeal dearly to my heart because that's where my education came from. He is also currently finishing up his graduate degree with a focus on public administration. It's anticipated he will graduate in February 2025. Lieutenant McNabb just completed his second week here in Gladstone and has already made a positive impact within the organization, and we look forward to his continued success in the future. Counselor
I'm going to give you a copy. Follow along with me. Okay, can you please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Eric McNabb.
I, Eric McNabb.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Oregon.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Oregon.
The laws and ordinances of the city of Gladstone.
The laws and ordinances of the city of Gladstone.
And the rules and regulations of the Gladstone Police Department.
And the rules and regulations of the Gladstone Police Department.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Well and faithfully.
Well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties of police lieutenant to which I have been appointed.
Discharge the duties of police lieutenant to which I have been appointed.
In and for the city of Gladstone.
In and for the city of Gladstone.
According to law.
According to law.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
So, as customary, we have the pinning ceremony. So, who would you like to pin your badge on?
My wife.
Thank goodness you said that. She's right up here. And now, here is our promotion. It's with excitement that I introduce Sebastian Orr, Sergeant Orr started his law enforcement career as a Milwaukee Police Cadet in 2013 before being hired as a Gladstone Police Reserve Officer in 2015. In 2017, Sergeant Orr was hired as a full-time police officer of the city of Gladstone. During his seven years as a Gladstone Police Officer, he has excelled as a field training officer and has a strong reputation for quality service delivery to the Gladstone community. Sergeant Orr is a 2012 graduate of Gladstone High School, where he's a multi-year letterman in basketball. He and his wife, Myroni, who's here, have been married for two years and are faithful community supporters. After a very competitive promotional process, Sergeant Orr was selected as Gladstone Police Department's newest sergeant. Sergeant Orr has completed the Sargent's Academy and started its field training last night. Well, this is his second night. Congratulations.
Really appreciate that.
All right, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Sebastian Orr.
I, Sebastian Orr.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Oregon.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Oregon.
The laws and ordinances of the city of Gladstone.
Laws and ordinances of the city of Gladstone.
And the rules and regulations of the Gladstone Police Department.
And the rules and regulations of the Gladstone Police Department.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Well and faithfully.
Well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties of police sergeant.
Discharge the duties of police sergeant.
To which I have been appointed.
To which I have been appointed.
In and for the city of Gladstone.
In and for the city of Gladstone.
According to law.
According to law.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Yes, thank you.
Sebastian.
I would like my wife to.
Myroni, come on up. He's got a vest.
Yeah, these are.
Thank you, guys. You guys have some regular photographs that we got before.
And our Police Department is not the only city department where we have great new staff onboard or in new roles. So, Administrator Betts, the next presenter.
Mayor Milch, tonight I would like to formally introduce Michelle Prusso as the Community Services Manager. Michelle Prusso's journey is inspiring and demonstrates a deep commitment to the Gladstone community. She has lived in Gladstone for 12 years with her husband and two daughters, who attended and graduated from the Gladstone School District. She moved to Oregon from rural Nevada to attend Portland State University, where she majored in marketing, advertising, and business management. Before working for the city of Gladstone, Michelle and her husband were self-employed for 20 years. Being self-employed allowed her flexible time to pursue volunteer work for several years. She and her husband began volunteering at the Gladstone Community Center, then called the Senior Center in 2016, delivering meals to homebound seniors. The city hired Michelle in 2021 to work in the kitchen as the nutrition caterer at the community center. Participants immediately fell in love with her cooking style and her passionate personality. In October, the city promoted her to Community Center Manager. From volunteering to delivering meals to seniors, working in the kitchen, and now stepping up as the Community Center Manager, she is a testament to dedication and community spirit. Community Center Managers like Michelle are the lifeblood of local communities. They foster a sense of belonging and ensure all residents, resources, and programs are available. These centers often serve as hubs for educational programs, social gatherings, and essential services, making them an integral to the fabric of the community. Please join me in congratulating Michelle Prusso, and let's wish her great success
All right, we move on to the first part of our agenda. Let me ask our city administrator, other than the changes on the sheet that we were handed at the dais this evening, are there any additions or corrections to the agenda?
No, as long as you are going to mention that we did send out an amended agenda on Friday that was posted to the website, and that is for a contract between the city of Gladstone and Braun Construction for the emergency sewer line repair at West Fairfield and Barton Avenue.
Okay, so that was added to the agenda after it was first posted. People who looked at it initially may not have seen that, but that is an item on the main part of our meeting agenda tonight. We begin with our consent agenda, which includes approval of the September 10, 2024 Regular Minutes, approval of the September bank balances, the budget report for the period ending September 30th, 2024, approval of the September check register, legal costs for the month of September 2024, and department head monthly reports for October 2024. Would any member of the council like to pull any item from the consent agenda? Hearing none, would someone like to move adoption of the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion. May we adopt the consent agenda?
A second.
All right, it was moved by Counselor Alexander, seconded by Counselor Huckabee, to approve the consent agenda. Tammy, will you call the roll, please?
Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Counselor Blau.
Yes.
Counselor Cook.
Yes.
Counselor Roberts.
Yes.
Counselor Garlington.
Yes.
Counselor Huckabee.
Yes.
Mayor Milch.
Yes, the consent agenda is approved as presented. This is the time in the meeting when we have Gladstone City event announcements, and I understand we do have some requests from people to make announcements tonight. Tammy, will you call them forward?
We just have one. Bob Everett.
Good evening, councilors. Mayor.
Jackie. John.
Thank you.
Chief. Thank you so much. Making my monthly trek here. I enjoy coming here very much, I must admit. You'd think if I did, I'd stay longer, but I don't. But anyway, a couple announcements. Of course, one is bingo this Friday. The Robotics Club, Kraxberger Robotics Club, will be joining us, and hopefully we'll get a good turnout. We had a great turnout the last one for the Cats Meow. That was, yeah, that was a lot of fun. They were a good group, and they brought in a lot of people, so that really helped out a lot, that's for sure. And we're not going to have one next in December. We had one last year in December, and it was sparsely attended. It would be around the 20th anyway, and who wants to -- it's just a few days before Christmas. More tonight, I wanted to talk a little bit about the Clothes Closet, which we do volunteer at. We volunteer once a month, and we basically fold -- I mean, it's pretty simple. We fold clothes. We sort of take at the intake, and then also at the store, we help out. I've been doing this now for three years, and since that time, I can attest that that place has grown astronomically. It was very unlikely we would get, you know, maybe three to five families. Now we get 25, 25, 30. We'll get requests for like over 50 kids. So, it is very crowded. There's a lot of clothes that are also are in the intake. We have bags and bags of stuff people know, and so they could really use -- I talked to Becky tonight, who basically sort of heads it up, and they could really use some more sort of weekly volunteers to help sort of fold the clothes, put things away, sort of transfer stuff back and forth. So, if anybody is the least bit interested in sort of joining that, it's Becky Spoelstra, but they can contact me. They can contact me either at my email, reevert78@yahoo.com, or even call me, 503-201-0785, and I can get them in touch with Becky, because they could really use the help. There's no doubt about it. The demand is incredible, and it's, I don't know, just watching the kids, they're very excited. There's no doubt about it. So, that's the main thing I wanted to talk about, just because of how busy it has become. So, does anybody have any questions of me or anything else? So, good. Keep up the good work, everyone, and, you know, and we'll make it through the winter, that's for sure. So, all right. Thanks so much, everyone. Take care.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Baum. All right, we move on now to our regular agenda. We have several items, beginning with Ordinance 1532, an ordinance adding new Gladstone Municipal Code, GMC, Chapter 5.10, dealing with massage facilities. Next, Ordinance 1536, adding new Gladstone Municipal Code, GMC, Chapter 5.75, commercial parking lot local tax per the Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities, CFIC guidelines. Then we'll look at Land and Water Conservation Fund, LWCF, grant from the Oregon Parks and Recreation Department for the Gladstone Nature Park Paved Loop Pathway Project. After that, Ordinance 1537, adding new Gladstone Municipal Code, GMC, Chapter 11, establishing regulations for public trees. And the new item referenced by our city administrator earlier, to approve a contract between the city of Gladstone and Braun Construction for the emergency sewer line repair at West Fairfield and Barton Avenue in the amount negotiated by the city administrator, which is not to exceed $75,000. And then finally, we'll have a League of Oregon Cities Conference Report. Several of our councilors attended, and we'll hear a little bit about that. Okay, so the first item on the regular agenda is Ordinance 1532 regarding massage facilities. Our city attorney is here. We have several ordinances on our agenda tonight, and I just want to say, you know, there's expression, well, let me say, staff has worked very hard in preparing these, some of them with the help of citizen committees, some of them with a lot of hard work, staff and legal department. We try to make these resolutions and ordinances as good as we can, and as complete and thorough as we can. But there's an expression, you don't want to let the perfect be the enemy of the good. So, we may find some little flaws and things along the way, and fortunately, in city government, we have the opportunity in the future maybe to refine or make some changes. So, let's, I'm wanting us to trust in the work that staff has done, and really find the value in what's been brought before us tonight, and if we can, to support what staff has brought to us. And so, we'll begin by hearing from our city attorney, Chad Jacobs, with regard to Ordinance 1532, after a brief
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Tonight, yeah, we're bringing this ordinance to you for consideration, and first, I'm going to go ahead and read from the staff report, because I think it's important to get on the record as to what we're trying to accomplish here. The Gladstone Police Department is aware that the illicit massage industry is known as a large and well-networked human trafficking market, and that the Portland Metropolitan Region is not immune to these types of businesses. The Police Department finds human trafficking to be a violation of the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of Oregon, and a violation of the laws of the United States and the state of Oregon. The city of Gladstone finds it in the best interest of the public and the interests of public health, safety, and general welfare, to prohibit businesses who engage in illicit activities from obtaining a business license in the city of Gladstone. Included with the staff report is an ordinance that's in front of you requiring standards, records keeping, and identification of all persons performing massage-related businesses within the city of Gladstone. Staff has worked with the city attorney and recommends adding this ordinance to the municipal code to require an approval process in addition to the city's standard business license when a business involves conducting massage-related activities for compensation. The purpose of this ordinance is to prevent illicit massage businesses from being able to operate within the city of Gladstone by means of a rigorous application process that requires background checks and stipulates that massage businesses must satisfy certain requirements to obtain a local license before opening. By doing this, we intend on identifying legitimate massage businesses from illicit massage businesses to create an inoperable environment for storefronts selling commercial sex. The proposed ordinance contains edits as suggested by council during its work session on this issue, as well as changes which were discussed during the work session to address concerns raised by legitimate business entities conducting massage-related activities. In short, we're trying to prevent storefront commercial sex and human trafficking. We've created this ordinance. We've worked with the city attorney to create a stopgap between the Oregon Massage Board and the illicit business, to make it extremely difficult to operate within the city of Gladstone, which is why there's such a rigorous application process for that. At the same time, we took many steps, listened to business owners, listened to council, and not put too much of a burden on current and legal massage businesses, people operating legitimate businesses. In that, you'll see throughout the documents, like in your exhibits, exemptions. There's state exemptions. Plus, we want to put upfront that if you're already operating a legitimate business within the city of Gladstone, you check the box that the person is licensed to the state of Oregon to do massages. You're exempt, so then you just check that box. You go to Section 5, you sign your name, you provide us a copy of the license, and we're done. There is no background check done, because the Oregon State Massage Therapist Group has already done those background checks. So, we don't need to go any deeper, as long as they're valid. And we can see that they're valid, because they're going to give us a copy of them, and we're going to attach it to the business license. For those that want to operate outside that, who do not have an Oregon massage business license through the state, is going to have to complete all this. Now, there's many ways to get around this, and I'm not going to hide anything from you, that these foot massage, some of the foot massage businesses aren't necessarily always foot massage businesses. And in order to keep track of that, this inventory that we have them fill out makes it extremely difficult for them to do, because a lot of people being human trafficked, get involved in human trafficking, don't have identification. They don't want to know. They go from place to place, and there's no consistency, and we're trying to avoid that. In essence, I'm happy to answer any questions you have regarding this, but I think I thoroughly explained it, what we're trying to accomplish here.
Thank you, Chief. I'll open it up for questions or comments from, yes, Counselor Garlington.
I have one tiny little change or addition. On the bottom of page A7, I think we need the word "do" after "to," registered to-do business.
Yes.
And the only other thing I'd like to comment on is the fact that I'm very excited that this could possibly trickle into the rest of Clackamas County, following suit behind the work that you've done, and I appreciate so much combating something that's just awful to think about. So, I appreciate your work.
Thank you, and I also have to credit Chad Jacobs. I mean, he's helped me walk me through this, so I think we're all learning something new.
Counselor Alexander.
Well, so just on each, I like on bottom of page six there, a front face portrait photograph. Will that be on every person who has a license that's operating at that?
No.
Just be the business.
This is the business, is the storefront.
Just the business owner, so.
That's correct.
Each massage therapist, there won't be their license with their picture.
Those operating in chiropractic, you know, chiropractic centers, facilities, or licensed to do these things, that's not who we're trying to.
Right, I just wondered why that would be.
This would apply to those, this would apply to those who are not certified.
Counselor Cook.
Yeah, I have a question. So, I think it's really adept to rely on a professional organization like the Oregon Board of Massage Therapists to kind of vet folks, to make sure they're legitimate. I'm curious, professional organizations, especially ones like the Oregon, like that are medical or medical adjacent, typically do a pretty good job of monitoring any issues, and I know that they sometimes can revoke or suspend their members at times. Is there any mechanism for, let's say we have somebody who is an accredited member of the Oregon Board of Massage, does some funny business, and is no longer does some funny business, and is no longer an accredited member of the Oregon Board of Massage? Is there any mechanism for catching that? And if not, is there a way that we could ask for updates from the Oregon Board of Massage? If they have any licensed members in Gladstone to send us an update if any of their members become unlicensed?
Well, I know from my work with the Oregon Massage Board that they're stretched thin. They do, they do not have a lot of resources. They do a lot of the certification of business type. However, they do also run stings. They do run missions to help do exactly what you, as said, if you're finding somebody doing funny business outside of what they're licensed to do, we can run things in conjunction with us, in conjunction with the local jurisdictions. Once that happens and they pull their license, now our rules and regs fall into place, and we can shut them down.
So you would be notified if.
We would be notified.
Great, thank you.
City Attorney Jacobs has his hand up.
Yes, Attorney Jacobs, go ahead.
Thanks. I just want to do one point of clarification is that the the state massage board is actually a state agency, it's a state licensing agency. It's not a private organization, so they actually have regulatory authority. And so if you violate those laws, you do violate state law as well. So it's a little bit different from a membership organization.
Thank you for that clarification.
Yeah, thanks, Chad, for that. Also, their violations are crimes, they're Class A misdemeanors. So they're not violations. We're suggesting violations here. Those are criminal acts.
Others? I have a question for Chad. Attorney Jacobs, I I looked at some similar ordinances from other cities. Your office may have taken a hand in helping to prepare those. I noticed there was a an increased emphasis in this particular ordinance on things like equity partners and owners and, you know, who who owns a share of the business. Can you say a little bit about why there's that emphasis on knowing who who owns and runs a business of this type?
Sure. Thanks, Mayor and Council for the record, Chad Jacobs from the city attorney's office. So, yeah, we did a lot of research related to this with the chief. And honestly, we, instead of looking at Oregon cities, and there's not many Oregon cities, I'm only aware of one, to be honest with you, that has done anything similar to this. And but in California, they've done a lot more work related to this because it's really been deregulated at the state level and it is regulated at the local level. So there's a lot more examples there. And what we found in our research is that there's a lot of gamesmanship, for lack of a better word, that owners of these entities like to play. I mean, when you're engaged in things like prostitution and human trafficking, you're not necessarily worried about complying with a lot of these laws. So they play a lot of games, try to play a lot of shell games as far as different business entities and things of that nature to try to tie their true identity. And so the reason that you have that type of language in this kind of ordinance is to stop those games from happening, so you can really find out who the people truly are behind these businesses to see if they do have that history of human trafficking or prostitution to make sure that we're catching the people who are actually engaged in illegitimate business activities.
All right, thank you. That's helpful to to see it more than just the act that goes on locally, but but the the brains behind it, or if you want to call it that. Good, good, that's helpful. Other comments? It's a long ordinance. We got a chance to review it at a work session. We got a chance to to it make some input, and you responded to that. We appreciate it. So I guess I will entertain a motion if anyone on the council would like to put this into.
I make a motion that we approve ordinance fifteen thirty-two massage facilities.
I'll second.
All right, it's been moved by Counselor Huckabee and seconded by Counselor Roberts.
I'm sorry to interrupt. If you just amend the motion so that it includes the amendment at the bottom of eight point seven that Counselor Garland mentioned.
Yes, I assume that was as part of your, yes, with the correction on on page. Okay, Counsel Robert, so your second also includes that.
We'll second the amended motion.
Very good, all right. And that means that means that Tammy will have to retype it before I can sign it, but we'll, if it passes, we'll get it there. All right. Any further discussion from members of the council? All right, Tammy, will you call the roll, please, on this item?
Counselor Blau.
Yes.
Counselor Cook.
Yes.
Counselor Roberts.
Yes.
Counselor Garland.
Yes.
Counselor Huckabee.
Yes.
Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Mayor Milch.
Yes. So I believe the ordinance passed unanimously, which means that it is adopted. There's no need for a second reading. And so thank you, staff, for helping us with that one. We move on to item number nine, ordinance one, five, three, six, adding new Gladstone Municipal Code GMC Chapter 5.75 Commercial Parking Lot Local Tax per the Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities CFEC Guidelines. And I will accept a staff report here.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. Heather Austin with Three J Consulting is going to give a brief overview about why this is becoming before the council tonight. And then City Attorney Jacobs can provide you additional information.
Thank you, City Administrator Betts. Can everyone hear me all right?
Yes.
Okay, great. Well, it's a pleasure to be here with you this evening, Mayor Milch and members of the council. We are here tonight to finish out our compliance with parking reform as required by the Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities, or CFEC, rules that have changed recently in the state of Oregon. So to be in full compliance with Oregon Administrative Rules six sixty dash zero one two dash dash zero four four five, we just have one piece left after last month in October, having adopted some pretty sweeping parking reform throughout the city. We are fully in compliance now with those pieces. And as you all recall, we had a choice of how to proceed to finish out our requirements. We could either adopt no parking mandates throughout the whole city, but we decided we wanted to potentially have a little bit of control over some infill type development that's not required to be mandate free. So the other two options are a fair parking policy, where we choose two out of five options, or a reduced regulation, which also has a list of mandates that we would remove. And we chose the fair parking policy. The two measures we chose were to unbundle commercial parking, and we did that with our code updates. And so the last piece is to require a tax on commercial parking lots. I think it's important to note that there are no commercial parking lots currently in the City of Gladstone. But I'll also note that we just had a pre-op request for a parking lot only in the city. I don't know if it's going to be commercial or be associated specifically with a business. But this could be something that happens in the future, and then future parking lots that do take payment for renting those spaces, be they hourly, daily, monthly. They would then be required to pay a tax to the city that would then be able to be used for other types of multimodal transportation upgrades. So this evening, as Administrator Betts mentioned, City Attorney Jacobs is better to answer questions about the specific language because this is in chapter five of your municipal code regarding taxes rather than your development code that I would normally answer questions on. So with that, I would be happy to answer any questions about the Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities rules or parking reform or anything like that. And then if you have questions about the tax piece of it, we'll defer those to City Attorney Jacobs.
All right, thank you, Heather. Let me ask members of the council, are there questions that you have for staff on on this? I had one, go ahead, Counsel Alexander.
I just want to clarify, you say, a private parking lot, that would not be taxable unless they rented it to somebody. So if you have a piece of property and you make it a parking lot, it's a parking lot. If you sell spaces to somebody, then there's going to be a tax and there's going to be.
You have it exactly right.
Okay, all right. So private, private's okay to just do and have people park there.
Right.
All right, thank you.
Counselor Blau.
Does the city have some kind of mechanism for collecting this tax, or is that something that we might see later on? Like, I I'm not as familiar with that.
Sure, and administratively, the city will have to put in new protocols now to collect it, much like when we first created the transient lodging tax ordinance. We worked with the Finance Department to put together a form. We notified the hotels and the short term rentals how they remit the tax. So the same would be spelled out in section five point seven five oh six oh. The city administrator has many responsibilities in this section. I'm glad there are no commercial parking lots right now, so it does give us time to put those into place. But yes, we will have to put together the collection and remittance process for that.
I have a question. When we started looking at this issue, we did some analysis, determined there were about two hundred and fifty approximately, public parking spaces in our, very adjacent to our our downtown commercial core. But a lot of them are associated with maybe one particular business because that business owns that parking and says it's only for the people who go to this particular business. People like to be able to park free and not have to pay a fee to park. But businesses don't want to invest in the land to create new parking spaces because that's land that could be used for what some would say were better purposes. So my question is, if someone invests in building a parking lot and makes an agreement with another business and says, I'll allow your customers to park here for free if you pay me a monthly fee to help compensate me for, you know, what it's cost to 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 put this lot in and pay the property taxes on it and all the rest, you know, maintain it. Would would that kind of an income arrangement be included as a taxable form of income? Are we only taxing what individual automobile drivers pay to park in the lot? Or do we need to clarify that at some point in the future?
I'm, oh, I'm going to defer to Attorney Jacobs.
So do you want me to take that one? So the the, let me back up and say a couple of things. So the ordinance itself was redrafted from the original ordinance that you saw from the City of Sherwood to be more in line with the City of Gladstone's municipal code. So a lot of the language that you see in this ordinance mirrors the language that you see in the transient lodging tax ordinance that Administrator Betts was just mentioning. So we tried to really line those up, so we weren't really going to recreate the wheel here. And then what we also did is we very closely followed state law. And so under state law, there's a definition of commercial parking lot, which we just basically incorporated into five point seven five zero two zero. And that means a site where the primary use is renting or leasing vehicle parking spaces, and it does not include shared parking. So I would look at this and say, the example that you just gave, Mayor, is an example of shared parking as opposed to an example of a commercial parking lot, so it would not fall within the scope of this ordinance.
All right, thank you. That's helpful. I think that, you know, one of the, one of the issues we have is to deal with in the city is a perception that there isn't enough parking. But part of the reason that perception exists is that some people, you know, respect the ownership of a particular parking spaces for that business is with it, with which is associated. It's not just everybody can park wherever they want. So if we have a way to help these businesses work together to create more parking for uses that don't coincide ours, for example, you know, Dr. Bob was just here who has a dental business, probably takes patients till five o'clock, maybe he has some evenings open. But maybe if he could work out something with businesses who have evening operations, like a restaurant, then everybody'd be happy. The land would be put to better use, but we don't want to tax people and disincentivize that either. So I'm glad for that clarification, and we'll hope that this works out. And as we say, it's not going to be too much additional business on the city administrator right away until we start to see, if we ever see, businesses that charge for parking. Very good. That's good to know. Dr. Bob has indicated that, yes, that 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 agreement, an informal agreement, has has been respected. So that's helpful to know. Other comments or questions from councilors?
Mayor Milch, I also want to add that if we do have a commercial parking lot where we, as a city, are receiving a tax, it has to go into a segregated account within the Transportation Fund. So our finance consultant would make sure that that is in a dedicated line item, and it has to be used for I projects that are in our transportation plan that are related to promoting alternatives to driving. And a question came up during one of our work sessions as to, well, could we use that money to improve sidewalks? And the answer is yes. So we would work with the city council before we expended any of those funds. But that is the intent of this tax is to help with alternative modes to transportation.
I'm glad you pointed that out because lots of people say, well, where's this tax money going? Or why are we just, you know, is it going into some kind of slush fund that just does anything? And if it is for, the way it's phrased in paragraph one, three, oh, used for transportation alternatives to drive alone travel, including active transportation options options in accordance with Oregon rules. So, you know, if we if we develop the shuttle bus system from existing public parking lots down to commercial areas, or if we developed, as you say, improved multimodal transportation, pedestrian sidewalks, bicycle lanes, something like this, this money could help that. And so not only would it provide parking for those people who choose to to get to those places by car, but it also improves the lot of those who who get there in other ways. All right, thank you. Would anyone like to make a motion regarding this proposed ordinance?
I would make a motion that we adopt ordinance fifteen thirty-six as presented.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Counsel Roberts and seconded by Counselor Garland. Any additional discussion? Tammy, will you call the roll, please?
Counselor Cook.
Yes.
Counselor Blau.
Yes.
Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Counselor Huckabee.
Yes.
Counselor Garland.
Yes.
Counselor Roberts.
Yes.
Mayor Milch.
Yes. The motion passes unanimously, which means that ordinance one, five, three, six is adopted. No additional, no second reading is required. You know, we we talk about rules and regulations that are imposed on us by the state, and this is one where we had some, we had some options and had to make some decisions. But ultimately, I think having, as as Heather reminded us, a little bit more freedom on what we do on regulating parking in all the city rather than just saying no parking mandates anywhere, I think will be good for us. And and this one right now will have a very low impact on the community, but we, who knows what things will be like in the future. All right, we move ahead to item number eleven, which is consider accepting a grant from the Land and Water Conservation Fund LWCF from the state of Oregon through its Oregon Parks and Recreation Department for the Gladstone Nature Park Paved Loop Pathway Project. Staff, will you present this for us tonight?
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. This is a project that the city has been working on for the last couple, almost three years, I would say. And it is in regards to a paved loop trail at the Gladstone Nature Park. We applied for a grant through the Land and Water Conservation Fund, and that was for us to be able to put in this paved loop. When we were told that we would be awarded the funding, we were also told that we would need to do a archaeological and cultural resources study before that they would award the funds to us. That took quite a bit of time for the city to get a company on board to complete that. We did solicit proposals. It was awarded to Trail Chronicle Heritage. They completed it this summer. The final archaeological report was sent to the State Historic Preservation Office. There were no comments received from tribes, no issues were discovered regarding the Gladstone Nature Park property. Basically, what they found is what we all knew is there's a lot of rock at the nature park. So the Oregon State Parks received clearance from the National Park System to proceed with the project, and they prepared the grant agreement for your consideration. I'm not going to go into a lot of detail about the history of how we created the Gladstone Nature Park Site Plan, but there is some things that I want to talk to you about before you accept the grant. This grant is a federally funded grant program by the Oregon Parks and Recreation Department. So if we accept this money and we complete the project, then this property will be recorded. A notice of a grant will be recorded on the property's title to ensure that the property is used for recreation purposes in perpetuity. So that means forever. And why I want to talk to you a little bit about what that. And why I want to talk to you a little bit about what that means specifically for this site is because one day I will not be here and one day you will not be here. And I'd like the record to show that we had talked about, um, potentially what happens if the site is no longer used as open space or for recreational use. So if you will indulge me for a moment, I have a teachable moment and a short PowerPoint that I would like to share with you. So the first slide is the aerial view of the property that is in question, and this was submitted in our grant application. The next slide is the same aerial view, but on it you will see that there is a shaded area on there um, for a future water tank area. And this is also identified in the Gladstone Nature Park Site Plan. And on the next slide, it is taken directly from the nature park, uh, site plan that shows, uh, this area reserved for future water storage tank. So when the city accepts the funding and completes the project, as I mentioned, Oregon State Parks requires that a notice of grant is recorded on the title to the property, ensuring that the property is used for recreational purposes forever. And the city shall not dispose of, exchange, encumber its title or other interests, or convert the use of the property without the approval of the Oregon Parks Rec Department. Interesting, when I'm going through this research, I find that we already have these restrictions on Cross Memorial Park. That was in nineteen seventy four, we accepted money from the state. Meljum Bar Park, that was in nineteen seventy two, Doll Beach in nineteen seventy three, Max Patterson Park in nineteen ninety six, and Derrick's Field in nineteen seventy. So we have received these types of funds for park improvements for many, many years. And there is also those restrictions on those properties. On the Gladstone Nature Park Site Plan and in the Gladstone Water Master Plan, there is a placeholder for a future two million gallon water tower for emergency water storage. The Friends of the Gladstone Nature Park and the Parks Board made comments during the development of the nature park site plan that they would like the water tower moved to another location, understandably because it takes up a lot of space and we could do other things on that site. However, that's not possible. It's located there because of its elevation requirements, its proximity to the utilities with the Webster Reservoirs. So staff spent time before this meeting to really look at, is there any other place that we could move that water tank? And there isn't. The master plan was adopted in twenty fourteen, and the water tower tank was listed as a low priority. And at that time, the cost estimate was about four point five million dollars, which in today's dollars would probably be more closer to eight to ten million dollars. There was no funding identified in the, the master plan for the water. Since the nineteen eighties, we have not had any capacity issues and Gladstone is prim- primarily built out. Will we ever need the water tower? That is the question. Maybe, maybe not. However, we also now have strengthened our IGA with Oak Lodge Water Services with an intertie connectivity in case of an emergency. So if we needed water, we have an intertie, an intertie connection with Oak Lodge where there's uninterrupted service. I am not an experienced public works director, so I cannot answer the question if the city needs to, to build this water tank. But our best guest in working with our experienced staff is that if we do, it could be ten to twenty years out still, and there's been no funding identified. So I guess what I'm saying is that we can't move the water tower, but if we ever need it in ten to twenty years, then we would need to talk about a conversion process with state parks. Next slide, Tammy. So what the conversion of a use is, is when a property acquired or developed with Land and Water Conservation Fund assistance is used for other than public outdoor recreation. Next slide. This slide shows you what triggers a conversion. When property interests are conveyed for private or non-public outdoor recreation uses, non-outdoor recreation uses are made of the project area of a portion thereof, including those occurring on pre-existing rights of way and easements or by a lessor. Continue to the next one. Unallowable indoor facilities are developed within the project area without the parks concurrents, such as unauthorized public facilities and sheltering of an outdoor facility. And the final of what triggers a conversion is public outdoor recreation use of public, of property acquired or developed with the assistance is terminated. So we cannot say for certain that a two million gallon storage tank will cause a conversion, but it is highly likely it will unless the reservoir can be justified as an eligible public facility and approved by the Oregon State Parks. Some cities across the nation have creatively put pickleball courts or basketball courts on top of their water towers, but they are buried in the ground. And burying a water tank on this site in a rock quarry is, is not an option. So I want to make sure that we are all going into this project with the assumption that if a water tank is built ten to twenty years from now or sooner, we will need to get a conversion from Oregon State Parks. And then the final piece I want to talk about is what does that conversion mean? It means that we have to basically find replacement property. Next slide, please. So the replacement property, we would take the equivalent of the size of the property that the water tank is on, and basically we would not need to find another piece of property in the city that we don't currently own and turn that into an open space. So if the state says, okay, you gotta build this water tank there, then we've got to find another piece of property and turn that into an open space. It does not have to be directly adjacent to or close by the converted site. The acquisition of one parcel of land may be used to satisfy several approved conversions. Uh, and then we would have three years to work on buying that property and converting it into open space. So the replacement property does not necessarily need to be of equal amount in terms of size, because I said that wrong. It needs to be the value of the property, and we would have to have a appraisal done to do that. So I just want the record to show that years down the road, when people consider doing something else with this property, or we are faced with having to put the water tank there, that everyone understands that there's, um, a notice on our property of, of a grant for perpetuity. And it was actually very helpful for me to work with Oregon State Parks, um, through this conversion process and what the replacement property could mean. And again, I don't foresee us having to put the water tank there, but I did want to make sure that people knew it's, it's likely impossible for us to relocate that to a different site. So with that understanding, I am still recommending that the city council accept this grant. The grant award is a hundred and eleven thousand five hundred dollars, and the city's match is the same. So the total project cost is two hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. This is a reimbursable grant, which means the city must pay the costs upfront, and then we will get reimbursed from Oregon Parks District. The funds would come from the park system improvements and project budget. And if this grant is accepted tonight, then at your December meeting, our finance consultant would bring back a resolution to increase our grant revenue and parks capital expenditure line item to bring all of this into compliance. And with that, I will answer any questions.
But let me say, we, um, uh, the good news about this is that these kinds of restrictions are consistent with, uh, public policy that was voted by the citizens of Gladstone several years ago. They don't want parkland sold without approval of the city. Uh, and, and I think it's, I think there's a consistent, um, consistency in terms of, of the value that we hold on our parklands and wanting it to be used for that kind of a purpose. Um, we, we never thought until this that that prevented us from having a water, um, uh, reservoir on a parkland. Uh, and, and we're not even all that certain that it, that it definitely does in this case. But because we, we see parks, Mount Tabor Park has water reservoirs. I think there's parks in, in Washington Park in Portland. Uh, certainly Central Park in New York has large water reservoirs as part of them. It can be, uh, but, but the kind we're talking about, uh, a big tank that sits above the ground. Uh, yeah, you'd, you'd have to, unless you rappel up the side with ropes or something, it's not going to be much recreation. But, uh, the other good thing is though, that as you thought about where could we put this water tank instead, the difficult part of answering that question is finding a place at the appropriate elevation and size and, and, uh, you know, it's flat enough that you could put a water tank and connect to our system. It's not nearly as difficult finding a location for a land of the same size as a water tank that can become a recreational amenity for the city. So I think in the future, this would not be as big a burden as it might appear now. Uh, we are built out. There's not a lot of vacant land in Gladstone. Uh, but any place that somebody might have thought could have been a possible, uh, uh, you know, reservoir site might be better suited for being a recreational park site or open space site. And, uh, speaking of open space, we just did that zoning change a, a couple of meetings ago to make this park zoned for open space. So again, there's a consistency in the policies that we've adopted so far on this.
That is true. And I think that, uh, the Friends of the Gladstone Nature Park and the Parks Board were very thoughtful through the process when we created the site plan because we knew that we had to have that possibility in there, but we can creatively talk about where the paved loop trail will be as we talk about using metro funds for the new restrooms and the picnic shelter. All of that we will take into consideration that right there, there's potentially, uh, a future water tank. Um, and, and so again, I'm not, I'm not concerned about, uh, not accepting the grant funding. I, I think we should move forward, but I also just wanted to, to make sure that we had eyes wide open in relation to the water tank.
One more question. Will the acceptance of this grant, uh, will the grant help to fund the actual design and location of the trail itself? I, I noticed we didn't get a map showing where it was going to be.
Right.
So that makes me think that that has not yet been determined and that determining that is part of the whole process.
That is correct. And if the council accepts this grant tonight, we would work with members of FOGNAP, the Parks Board. And depending on when we will receive notification of the funding from Metro for the restroom and picnic shelters, I would like to do both of these projects together. Uh, but yes, design and engineering of the trail has not been done yet.
Okay, thank you. I, I kind of stepped ahead of everyone else with questions, but I see Counselor Ozend, you have your light. You have a question as well.
Just real quick. So this is, this grant right here is one, we will pay for it and then we'll be reimbursed. We have the money to pay for this and get this done, and then, then we will be reimbursed by this grant.
Correct. And that is one of the reasons why we've cautioned the Parks Board not to spend more of the money that's in there because we have to pay for this upfront first. Yes.
Counselor Roberts.
Uh, Administrator Betts, what is the precedent for offering these conversions? Cause I'm reluctant to give up something that we could use as emergency resource management. So how easily are, uh, the conversions offered and what's the precedent for that?
Yeah, I don't have an answer to that. Um, and I don't know if City Attorney Jacobs has any experience with the conversions. So I'm not able to answer that.
Okay. Frankly, I don't feel ready to vote on this then, given what you've said. I'd like to know more about, like, more guaranteed long-term planning of that emergency resource management facility, whether we would use that. Um, those are the only questions I have. Thank you.
Other questions or discussion?
I guess an, uh, open question that, um, maybe Attorney Jacobs might be able to answer. Um, so I noticed that the, the earlier slide, um, talked about conversion would be required if there was no National Park Service concurrence. Um, do we have any idea of, it, it seems like a reasonable person, like, let's say the big one happens in Gladstone and we're forced to look at alternative measures for water supply. Um, is there any precedence or does anybody have any, any experience with understanding how agreeable um, NPS has been in the past, um, with offering concurrence when conversions have had to be made?
Again, I don't have that information. And the other, uh, when working with staff from Oregon State Parks, they couldn't tell me that the water tank would require a conversion. It's a possibility, and I'm going into this that it likely would because they even brought it up to us. So I don't have any additional information on, uh, what that conversion process looks like, how long it would take, or any of that information. And just to get back to Counselor Roberts, you, your question was in regards to emergency.
Resource.
Resource management. What specifically?
Just given that we could have an extra two million gallons of water available right there.
And I think what I was trying to convey, and maybe I didn't do it correctly, is that if we are gonna have a water tank, it will have to be placed there.
Yes.
Yes. So we're not looking to buy another piece of property to where the water tank would go.
Right. Of that, I have no doubt.
Okay.
I just want it to be known that I am saying if it is ultimately advantageous to us as a city, I don't have an issue with the water tank being placed there. I think that that is wise, especially given the research that you and your staff have done, letting us know there is not another location for that. Um, I frankly have no qualms giving up a relatively small footprint for that. I think the example I kind of am thinking about in my head is, uh, aptly named Water Tower Park in Milwaukee. The footprint is, it's a large concrete pad with a big tower above it, but the nature park is large, and I don't think that anyone in the community or the city believes that giving up that space would be negative or negatively affect the city, given that we could have, uh, greater resources there.
So I'm almost interpreting your request as something separate from accepting the grant because if we need to have the water tank, it's, it's not an option. It will, it will go there, but you're more questioning, do we need the water tank? And should we find funding for that?
I, I'll change my line of attack. Number one, if we choose not to move forward with this tonight, what are the consequences? And the reason I ask is because I would like to greater explore whether or not a water tower there is necessary. And then I guess thirdly or tertiary, defunding.
We don't have a public works director, so we wouldn't know the answer to this until probably several months into twenty twenty-five, if we do have a new public works director on board. This would something I would suggest you bring up at the city council goal setting session then, if that rises to a level where you want the city to explore that. If we don't accept the grant, we don't get the funding and we would go back in and apply again at a later date.
Okay. Attorney Jacobs.
Yeah, I just want to say that, um, I unfortunately do not have experience, and I can certainly ask around from others about this conversion process with the state or the federal government. The reason the federal government is involved here is because this is basically money from a federal grant, and we're basically a sub-recipient from the state. And so, uh, but I can tell you in other situations, both the state and the federal government have been very amenable towards, uh, being flexible in these kinds of situations, which is why you have an entire process already set up about replacement areas and everything else, just because they know that there's certain needs, especially when you're doing emerg- emergency preparedness issues, um, that there's a lot of flexibility there. I, I think the question before the council, just to sort of rephrase this a little bit, is whether or not you want to give up a hundred percent control. is whether or not you want to give up 100% control over that situation now and bring in potentially the state and federal government into that process for, in exchange for the $100,000 grant. And so that's sort of the, the question before you all. Is it worth that $100,000 to give that up? And so really maybe what you're asking is for, you know, either our office or Jackie to, to go back and, and work with the state and get some more information about the conversion process, how often it's been denied, how often it's been requested. So you can have some more information about, you know, the likelihood of that occurring and whether or not, you know, it would really cause problems for the city if you wanted to move forward with a water reservoir. I, I think at this point, even with a public works director, and, and this is just based on my experience working with other cities and other water departments, I don't think we're going to know whether or not the city is going to need this water reservoir. As Administrator Betts said, right now we've got tie-in agreements with other water jurisdictions to provide us backup water. And, you know, that is a very common thing going on throughout the state and throughout the country where water service providers are working with each other, providing redundancies. So in case of emergencies, you're not relying on things like above ground water towers that frankly could be damaged in a big earthquake. It may not exist. It may cause other problems. And I don't want to scare people. There's a lot of technology that's stopping that from happening. But, you know, there, there's reasons why water jurisdictions are looking for these tie-in agreements like City Administrator Betts was talking about. So I, I think that analysis about whether a water tower is needed may not be answerable at this point in time. There's a lot of things that are gonna probably depend on, you know, future development, future growth and other sorts of things about whether and to what extent that we need that additional water supply. But, you know, the real question again, sort of backtracking for me that I'm hearing from you all is, is it worth giving up 100% ability on our own to make this decision for $100,000? Or is it worth taking the $100,000 and bringing the state and federal government and to basically sign off on that? And I think if you want us to, and, and maybe City Administrator Betts can let us know if we have time to do this, but if there is time to do this, we could certainly go back and get more information from the state and find out how many requests have been made, how often they've been approved, and maybe that would give you some greater comfort moving forward.
Do we have time, Administrator Betts? What's our timeline for accepting this grant?
I, I would have to talk to the state and see if they would give us an extension and I'm happy to do that. So.
I would like to ask then that you would proceed with that process.
Also, if, is it possible we make, like if we were creative with our use of the water tower, can we put recreational use, say, I don't know, underneath it and get around that? Like, is that also a possibility?
I tried to talk to them about that and it wasn't likely that, that that would happen. So.
I like that.
Council Alexander.
Staff recommendation to accept the, the grant? Is that what the staff, is that what you came up with, Administrator?
Yes.
I, I think you guys put in enough time and effort and look at that stuff, but if you think that's what we should do, I, I would go with that.
Mayor, you did have someone that wanted to speak?
Yes. And I wanted to hear from, you know, they, the person who requested to speak probably didn't want to talk about this particular nuance of this whole decision, but maybe advocacy for, you know, the original purpose of the, the grant and, and the resolution. So I would like to hear from that person. So.
Okay. Nancy Ickstead?
Okay, I'm Nancy Ickstead, Mayor, Council. Thanks for looking at this tonight. I'd like to speak in support of the Oregon State Parks Paved Loop Pathway for the nature park. The community and all the friends of the park are very excited to see this handicap accessible trail that will enable all of our park visitors to enjoy the peaceful habitat and wildlife of the park. Gladstone's parks were all acquired well before any ADA accessibility regulations were established or encouraged by any governing body. So it's exciting that we can address this major improvement with the partnership of Oregon State Parks for $225,000, sitting on the table, waiting for you to pick it up. This trail was my dream. I've observed many park visitors with multiple abilities who could utilize this trail. These include individuals with mobility challenges who enjoy the park daily, families with tots and strollers, a wheelchair hiking group that I recently met at the community festival, a gentleman from Somerset Lodge who does birding from his motorized wheelchair and can't go on the soft paths. All of these folks will be able to extend their stay in the nature park because of this trail. I'd like to personally extend my thanks to the council for your leadership and for taking an active role in addressing accessibility in our community. It makes a big difference for the town. As for the water tower, I don't think anyone ever envisioned having it there or needing it there. And I don't know that the trail would interfere with the placement of a future water tower. It's just not something that's been discussed at length. But you're sitting on money that will go away, evaporate if you don't do this. I don't know if Jackie can come up with an alternate timeline while you explored this other thing or not, but it's a, it's an opportunity. Thank you.
Thanks for that input. You know, that addresses the original issue and I, and we got off on this tangent and, but I appreciate your advocacy for the real purpose of this because that reminds us, you know, what we're, what we're weighing against what in making this decision. Counselor Garlington, I believe you intended to make a comment as well.
Well, I just want to add that when we did the site plans for the park and then we did the site plans for the individual park, individual parks themselves, I'm sorry, when we did the, the overall parks master plan and then the park site plans, none of this information was hidden. We all knew that the tower would, could potentially be built there. Although in Administrator Betts's words, I believe she said something near 10, 20 years down the line. And my guess is it would be even longer than that as we take into account the, the updated way that we get water. You know, we're not getting water from water towers anymore. We're getting it straight out of, you know, water reservoir, straight out of flowed, flowed running water. And I, I just think this is damn near a moot point, you know, I, I just, it's, it, I understand why it has to be part of the discussion. But I, what I don't understand is why we would turn away $225,000 for something that could potentially never happen. We have two water reservoirs in our city already. To put in a third when we're not growing would almost be non-existent. So I'm not sure why we would not. And like Counselor Alexander, I would prefer that we move forward with a vote.
Counselor Cook?
Sorry, that wasn't, really did just need to be cleared. Yeah, I think as we're thinking about possibilities and costs versus benefits, right? Like there is, you know, I think Administrator Betts did a great job of drawing our attention to, hey, here's a potential hiccup that could occur, right? And our, our job is to decide if that is going to stand in our way or not. My preference would be to move forward with the grant because I would have a hard time thinking about a federal agency telling us, hey, you need a water tower to provide essential services to your residents. We're not going to let you do that because we think you need a park. I, I just, I just don't think that that's really going to happen. I think that I have trust and faith in our federal agencies to understand that access to safe drinking water is critical. And I think if we ever got to that place, I think we would have the ability to move forward. I don't think that they're going to stand in, in the way of us providing essential services to our community. So for that reason, I, I agree. And I think we should move forward with the grant.
Counselor Blau?
Yeah, I also agree with moving forward with the grant. I think, you know, in the future, if we need to cite a water tower, tower there, we have other options. And it seems like one of those things that water towers are not the way, the, the wave of the future. They're sort of the wave of the past. And I think providing a recreation in our area is really important, especially for those who are differently abled. And yeah, I would like to see this move forward. I would also like any additional design work to take into account that we might possibly need to do that in the future. I think that's an easy fix for this. So, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I tend to agree with Counselor Blau about, you know, if, if we haven't planned the, the location already for this path. One, one constraint could be that there is land that seems to be designated as the best place for a possible future water reservoir. And if we could avoid that, that would be appropriate. I do think though, that as you explained, the conversion system is designed to allow for this flexibility. And as I said earlier, I think it's much easier to find an equivalent sized piece of property that could be converted to public recreational use than it is to find an alternative location for a water tower. I disagree with those who say that it's technology of the past. No matter where the original source of our clean drinking water is, it generally will go into some kind of a reservoir to, to make sure that we have the capacity to, to manage varying demands across the summer season, for example. We need to keep it full. We need to keep it from emptying out and we need to monitor the water being pumped in. An actual public works director would be able to, to, to say that better than I can. But I think it's still an essential part of water infrastructure for cities as we know it now. One this size for a city that's not growing, it's probably not anywhere near an immediate need. And that makes me less concerned about letting this stop us from acting on this particular request. One thing I ought to want to correct, it's not $225,000 that we're sitting on. It's half that amount. The other amount is coming from city parks and recreation funds that are already part of our budget, part of our assets for capital improvements of our parks. But the grant is only covering half of that.
Yeah. And the other thing I want to add is even though I don't have detailed information on how many conversion processes have been successful, like you mentioned, this is a process that the state has in place. And I kind of equate it to like wetland mitigation credits. And you, there are examples where if you're developing in a wetland here, you, you have a taking, so you're adding wetland in another area and that's similar to what we would be doing here. And again, it wouldn't be the same size of the property. It'd be the same value of the property. Even if you decide to accept this, I'm happy to look into the conversion process. But like you, I wouldn't be doing my professional duties if I didn't disclose this information. But it's not enough for me to feel like we shouldn't accept the grant.
Can I ask one more question?
All right. Counselor Garlington, one more question.
So I'm going to back things up just a little tiny bit. And I, I didn't write down the list of parks that you said already have this. How much of Meldrum Bar has this distinction?
That I, I don't have an answer for. I'd have to go back and look at the parcel of what that is. But I'm guessing most of you didn't know that there was these restrictions on our parks property either. So that's why I said this is a teachable moment to go through this.
I think the reason that I asked that is because up until a couple of months ago, not all of Meldrum Bar Park was on that same parcel and now it is, which tells me that it could possibly have been piecemealed with some of those distinctions at that time, which means that there is still land that would be allowable to use as that conversion at Meldrum Bar Park that were not originally part of the original.
I believe it has to be property that the city doesn't currently own, that we would have to purchase.
Okay. Well, thank you for that clarification.
Yes. But I'm happy to send you the link to where I looked up all of these so you can see where the restrictions are. There is a map and it's actually, like I said, very educational.
Thank you.
I, I know that now and then we hear concerns from citizens about the, the uses of our parks for things other than recreational things. We used to do, the fire department used to do a lot of practice over at Meldrum Bar. And, and some people in the community felt that was not a public recreational use of that facility. It was, it was, you know, maybe not permitted. And we can agree or disagree over the legality of it, but it's good for us to have this reminder. And again, I go back to the value that citizens placed. We decided about 10 years ago, we didn't want to sell parks, parkland owned by the city without the approval of the voters. And I think that this whole system is very consistent with that value. And I think that we want to make our decisions accordingly. But it sounds to me like we're ready for a vote. We may not be unanimous on this, but I, I think we're ready for a motion and a vote.
I'll make a motion that Gladstone accept the Land and Water Conservation Fund Grant Agreement.
I'll second the motion.
All right. It's been moved by Counselor Alexander and seconded by Counselor Cook to accept the grant from the state of Oregon through its Oregon Parks and Recreation Department for the Gladstone Nature Park Paved Loop Pathway Project. Any further discussion? Tammy, will you call the roll, please?
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Roberts?
No.
Counselor Garlington?
Yes.
Counselor Huckabee?
No.
Counselor Alexander?
Yes.
Counselor Blau?
Yes.
Mayor Milch?
Yes. The motion passes, I believe, by five to two.
Correct.
All right. So staff, you are instructed to go ahead and pursue that grant. Mrs. Ickstead, thank you for coming and presenting tonight. We appreciate your input and the work that your, your group has done in helping us to get this grant. Yes.
Can I have one small neighborly little thing?
Sure.
So along with the paved loop trail and restrooms potentially down the line and a, another covered shelter area, which everybody in Gladstone who tries to have their five-year-old birthday party at a covered shelter area in a park in our area will be thrilled to death to have. Nancy has a group that is working on an ADA accessible bird blind for wheelchair accessibility. I mean, I, because we, you know, if you, if you ever get a chance to walk up at the park, there are people that have very large wheelchairs. They're not small children. These are adults that need a lot of space to move around in. And this bird blind that Nancy has a dream for is, it really would put Gladstone, it would just put a gold star on the map in, in, in our neighborhood. And, you know, and we always talk about that whole tourism thing and that people are then, they come to Gladstone to do something and then they stay for lunch and they stay and have a ice cream cone and they stay and they go to the parks and, or I mean to the, the shops and, and they visit our neighborhood and maybe one day move into our neighborhood, which is what we want to do because we want everyone to feel welcome here. So, thank you, Nancy.
Now, these, these amenities are certainly important. It's the reason we do parks master plans, the reasons we do site plans for individual parks. We don't just let things just sort of happen willy-nilly. When we put some thought into it and have some values and goals behind it, we find that, that one project, you know, develops into something else. This is a trail that's specifically designed to meet at both ends of the trail we currently have. And then it could be something that would provide access to the kind of thing that you suggested for this new project. So I think it's a good approach to take, to be planning these things and thinking in the future and thinking how we can make the park more accessible and more attractive to the community.
Well said. Thank you so much.
All right. We move on to the next item, item 11. This is another ordinance we're adding, proposing to add to our Gladstone Municipal Code, Approval of Ordinance 1537, Adding Title 11 to the Gladstone Municipal Code, Establishing Regulations for Trees on Public Property. And we will get some clarification tonight as to what public property means with regard. And we will get some clarification tonight as to what public property means with regards to trees, because as I read through this, I think that's one of the more interesting things about it. Go ahead, councillor, or administrator Betts.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, just to give a little bit of history on this, the council gave guidance to staff to work with the Oregon Department of Forestry to apply for Tree City USA designation in 2024. That application is due on December 15. So what the standards are, are to have an ordinance, establish a community forestry program with an annual budget of at least $2 per capita, and adopting a resolution proclaiming Armor Day observation. We are almost complete with meeting those standards, the last of which is to adopt a tree care ordinance. You appointed some great representatives to serve on the Ad Hoc Tree Board. They identified Eric Butler, Nancy Ikestead, Kim Baller, Linda Cosgrove, Justin Proudy from PGE, and Sandy Dipmar. As I mentioned earlier, we currently have a vacancy in the Public Works Director position, which left me here to try to pick up the pieces and get this adopted. Brittany Oxford, who's the Oregon Department of Forestry Community Assistance Forester, she came and presented to us. She has really helped me in finalizing this. And after we got it in draft form, I sent it to City Attorney Chad Jacobs, and he's the one that really said, okay, I get what you want to do, but let me put it in the right legal lease terms for you. So you're going to see that since the time that we met as a work session in July, that it really needs more succinct and clear in the ordinance. So what you have in your packet is a draft of the ordinance. It does talk about, you know, definitions, authority, tree planting standards, abutting property owner responsibilities, tree topping, tree pruning, damage to public trees, public tree removal, removal of tree stumps, the tree permit process, violations and penalties, and appeals. At the beginning of this meeting, the mayor mentioned that the council will be considering new law for the city that could be evolving. And one of the things that I would recommend before we get into the discussion is to really educate the public on this tree ordinance for several months into 2025 before we impose any penalties. That gives a new Public Works Director time to absorb it, to understand it. It gives the public time to realize what their responsibilities are. A lot of what we have put into this ordinance regarding trees on public property is already the property owner's responsibility. And we're trying really hard not to deal with private property rights. It's only when it refers to an abutting adjacent property or where it's a hazard onto the city's right-of-way. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to City Attorney Jacobs. I don't know, Chad, if you wanted to go through any of the changes that you had sent to me last Thursday, just so the council has a little bit of an idea of what you changed.
Sure, let me pull up the email that I sent you real quick, so I have that list. But in the meantime, I can tell the council that, as you're well aware, you know, this is a sort of common ordinance that you see in cities all across the United States who want to become tree cities. They are used, you know, for a couple of different purposes, primarily to ensure that the health of the city's urban forest, you know, is maintained. And so what you want to do with these tree ordinances is make sure that you have obligations for care, that you, you know, clearly define what are the types of trees that you're going to allow, and you'll see that in the ordinance where the Public Works Director will come up with a list of sort of the public trees that get planted. Because often what you see happen is people plant trees that are too big for the area. They, you know, their roots grow, they crack the sidewalks, they crack the streets, they cause lots of other infrastructure problems. They grow in manners that interfere with utility lines, which causes other sorts of problems, you know, especially in the storms that we've been having lately with down wires and tree branches falling. You know, Gladstone has not been immune to that. So we, you know, in the ordinance, what we try to do is make sure that all of those types of things are included. And the draft that you originally, you know, saw had a lot of that in there, but what I did primarily is just sort of restructure it, so it followed the format of our existing codes. We have a title and chapter and then sections. Then I also removed some redundant terms. So for example, we had both parkway and parking strip in the ordinance, and I just consolidated those down, so it just says parking strip now. Right likewise, we had both street trees and public trees, which were basically defining the same thing and used differently in the ordinance, so I just consolidated those into the term public trees. I added a definition for a right-of-way, so what we fully understood to be, you know, the city's right-of-way throughout the rest of the city's code matches this ordinance. I added a requirement to the public work director standards that previously what it said is that, you know, you had to comply with certain state standards, or state and federal standards, the ANSI standards and the BMPs when you're doing your tree work. And there's a doctrine under state law about the council not being able to delegate its legislative authority. So when you do something like that, it means that whatever standards exist on the date that you adopt the ordinance are the standards that apply. And anytime those standards get updated, you have to update the ordinance at the same time to make the new standards apply. So what we did is we just basically said that the standards will be adopted by the director. So that way we don't have to actually amend the ordinance every time those standards are updated. The director can just do that on their own. We also added some sections to basically consolidate the abutting property owner duties into one section and clarify the city's procedures for enforcement to really follow the city's nuisance procedures when we're dealing with properties that are on private property that are causing problems in the right-of-way. And then providing those procedures when it's public trees that are within the right-of-way. We added some language to make very clear that the abutting property owners have liability to third parties and to the city if they cause damages. So if they fail to maintain their trees, their tree falls on a parked car in the right-of-way, that they, rather than the city, would be responsible for those damages. And that's something that's very common in these ordinances throughout the country. We also clarified the permit process, and we added a ritter review as the basis for appeal for any council decision. So, you know, under the ordinance, initial decisions are made by the Public Works Director. Those decisions can be appealed to the city council. There was no set process in the ordinance for how an appeal of the city council decision was made. So like many other sort of decisions made by the city council, we added that ritter review process. That's a basic overview of the changes that we made. Again, most of these were not really substantive changes. I think they were just sort of clarifying processes and procedures and really making it so it's more consistent with our existing code. So very long wind away of an explanation of what we did, but I do think you've got a pretty good work product in front of you, and I'm happy to answer any questions you've got about the specific language in the ordinance.
Well, Chad, I appreciate you going into this detail because it really did start as something, you know, developed by a group of citizens who care about trees and understand their importance to our city and its environment. And yet, it is something that in order to really make it work, it has to be designed in a way that's consistent with our code and the way we do things and the understandings that we have, and any penalties or references need to be spelled out clearly enough that it is enforceable and helpful to citizens who seek guidance in what they can do to add to our urban forest in the community. So the work that done by both this committee and your office, it's all very valuable, and I'm glad we found a way to kind of, you know, take the values of one group and put that into the the language that the attorneys know is probably the best for this kind of an approach. Are there questions or comments from councillors? Councillor Garlington, yes, your question.
I believe I heard this at one time, but I wanted to ask you again. You talked about $2 administrative bets. You talked about $2 per
person.
Person. We already spend about that, do we not?
So in our parks budget, we have a hazardous tree line item, and there is $50,000 for two years, so our population is about 12,140 times two. So we're there with our budget. We have that money there. So yes, that's not an issue.
And that, just to clarify, that's one of the requirements of becoming a Tree City USA. That expenditure of $2 per capita would not be part of this ordinance. That's just something that is related to that other action that over, that bigger goal that we had of becoming a Tree City. That's the reason we, you know, well, that's one reason we put this ordinance. And as you said, we had some rules already in place about visibility and, you know, how much a tree needed to be trimmed, how high above a sidewalk it needed to be. The part of this that was a little bit surprising to me was when we talk about public trees, people might think, oh, that's trees that are in a public park or trees that are outside the city hall, public facility. No, we're talking about trees that are on the parkway that separates the sidewalk from the street in front of individual people's homes. And just like the sidewalk in front of your home is your responsibility to maintain, but it's used by the public. The trees that you plant there, you have some responsibility as a homeowner, and this is setting forth just what that responsibility is. And I'm glad for the clarification, and now we need to see if it's something we agree with and something we want to adopt.
I would like to add two more points. One is that there is a permit process, but it is free, so there's no charge. It's just Public Works wants to be able to have an understanding of who is doing what with trees, and that form will be created and put on our website in the near future before the ordinance goes into effect. And I also wanted to say what is not in this ordinance is the updated recommended tree species list. That work begins tomorrow with our tree advisory group is meeting. Our current tree species list that we have is extremely antiquated. The city has always followed Clackamas County's recommended tree list, which was last updated in 2020. There's been a lot of comments, and even the survey questions and answers were really interesting about this tree of heaven that is throughout Gladstone. And so making sure that not only do we have a recommended street tree list, but also a list of what's not allowed, I think is really important, and again, that's going to be the focus of this group to create this document. It's not part of the ordinance, but it is then something that the Public Works Director has to work off of with the public.
Councillor Cook?
I'm glad you brought up your statement, Mayor Milch. I have a clarifying question on page 11-7 under Section 3. So it states that, essentially it states that property owners who are adjacent to city trees or public trees have a responsibility to mitigate any potential hazards to any services like sewer line, electric power line, gas line, water line. So my question, and I think that makes sense. I think that's a reasonable expectation. I guess my question is, in the case that we have, you know, I think about my retired neighbors who maybe are living on a fixed income, right, like my low-income retired neighbors. If they have a public tree that is, and this work is expensive, you know, it could easily get into five figures to mitigate a hazard like this. Do they have any, are we aware of any resource or, you know, public funding for hardship cases? You know, I don't want to have a little old lady kicked out of her house because her oak tree grew into the sewer and it's $50,000 to repair. Does that make sense?
Sure, and the city currently does not have any hardship fund set up for that. Again, I think that's why it's going to take time for us to first educate property owners to know what their responsibilities are. But that is going to be something that we will need to consider, is there going to be a hardship? And there's also not the tree police that's going to be able to go out right now and identify all of those trees that need to be removed, but your point is well taken. And whether or not the city wants to allocate any of their hazardous tree removal line item to that, the other thing to keep in mind is that if there are fines or a penalty imposed, that goes into a separate line item that also has to be used for tree care in parks. So thinking future, you know, the city could consider that.
Chad, you have your hand up. Go ahead.
Yeah, I was just going to add to that, that one of the things that I've seen in other jurisdictions with these ordinances and the benefit of these ordinances is that there's a large education process, as City Administrator Betts was just talking about. And part of what that education process does is it makes people aware of these issues and the fact that maybe I've got a tree in my front yard that really shouldn't be there because it's going to grow too big and cause those problems like you were talking about. And so that way people can then begin to plan for that tree removal and planting of a more appropriate tree, so they don't run into that situation. And they can, you know, plan for that like any other sort of house maintenance, like painting your house or putting a new roof on. That can be a planned expense, and you're not dealing with it on an emergency basis. So that is actually one of the benefits I've seen from ordinances like this, is that education aspect, that all of a sudden people realize things that they have really never thought of before.
Love that. I think I'm happy to move forward with this. I think just kind of flagging this for, you know, the next council, having some sort of, you know, hardship fund. You know, we have some ARPA money that has yet to be assigned. I think having some sort of hardship fund that the city could use to keep existing residents in their homes in a situation like this would be something that the future council could consider.
Councillor Blaug?
Yeah, I really like that, especially for trying to encourage people to plant trees. You know, I think once we start educating people on this, my fear is that people will choose not to plant trees rather than accept the risk.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I share that concern. And I think one of the reasons some communities get into this a little more are that there are nonprofits and private organizations that that help people make good decisions and help provide trees, sometimes at a discounted rate, or provide some assistance in planting. Friends of Trees is the organization that the city of Portland uses, had used for many years. They had a contract relationship with them to do this. I think that long-term contract ended, and my thought as soon as I heard that was, boy, you know, Gladstone and other cities in Clackamas County ought to, you know, link up with this group because they do good work. And as Chad said, if people could become more well-informed about the kind of trees that really enhance our community, our environment, that are safe, that are not invasive, that, you know, often are native to the area and really contribute in good ways. And then we have some groups or others that kind of assist people in making that possible. I think I would like to think that people err on the side of planting trees rather than saying, oh, I don't want to get in trouble if I plant the wrong thing, so I'm not going to do it at all. Any other comments or questions? All right, are we ready to hear a motion on this?
I believe we have public comment.
Oh, that's right. I forgot that you have one on this item as well.
Yes, Glenda Shearer.
Go ahead, push the button to speak, and you have three minutes. It'll stay up there.
Is it on?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Hey there, my name is Glenda Shearer, and I'm a Gladstone resident and taxpayer. My public testimony is in regard to Ordinance 1537, which I support. But I want to bring a request to the city for consideration. Ordinance 1537 provides for the creation of a list of desirable trees. I would like to suggest that in addition to having that list, that the city of Gladstone establishes a list of invasive or noxious weeds. On top of that invasive list should be the tree of heaven, and this is the tree of heaven. The tree of heaven is spreading in Gladstone, and many residents and business owners do not know how bad the tree is, how it spreads, or the damage that it causes. The city should start with education about this invasive species through the city newsletter and create a comprehensive plan that addresses the education and abatement of this invasive species. I learned about the tree of heaven through personal experience. A year ago, a new tree sprung up in my yard along the fence line. It was about six feet tall. I cut it down, and then this last year it came back again, much larger and on my neighbor's side of the fence as well. It cracked the fence board. From that initial entrance onto my property, I've seen it in two other locations. It quickly towered to over 13 feet tall. And I cut it down again and then I did some research. I'm going to go ahead and skip down just a bit to say that it's a very fast growing tree. It's highly invasive. It spreads rapidly. It poses risks to our infrastructure because of the nature of how invasive it is. And if it grows along in a certain area, it can crack sidewalks and other things. You can, when you see it in Gladstone, you can visually trace the progression of its spread just by driving around. For example, I think that my tree likely came from the tree that's growing on the corner of Ridge Gate and Oakfield, which likely came from a whole stand of trees that's on the corner of Oakfield and Webster. This can create a costly maintenance issues for homeowners and the city of Gladstone. Let me skip down just a bit and just say, I ask that you consider creating a list of invasive trees, focus on education of the public and take steps to abate the tree of heaven and other invasive vegetative species. Thank you. And I will, I'll have little samples. Do not plant them. But I'll cut up some samples because it, someone told me that it actually looks like the black, black walnut. It's very similarly shaped. So I'll cut the, those will be on the back table.
Thank you. That's helpful. People rely on Google Images and other things to identify plants of all kinds. And it's it's helpful sometimes to discover that something that, we had something growing in our backyard that looked like, well, I didn't know what it looked like, but somebody, we we immediately discovered it was an invasive thing that we didn't want to have. And so that's helpful input and I hope that'll be part of the plan. We have a, we have a good committee working on this, so I appreciate that input. We have the rest of your statement. It's very informative. I happen to know, close to somebody in Public Works. We have this on on public, public park land and we did a, the city did a good removal of quite a bit of trees of heaven at one or more of our local parks recently. So we tried to be on top of it. I hope homeowners will too. I hope they all learned something tonight. And that there are other examples, we'll try to share that with people as well. All right, do we have a motion for this item?
I make a motion the city council adopt ordinance 1537, adding title 11 to the Gladstone Municipal Code, establishing regulations for trees on public property.
I second that.
All right, moved by Counselor Huckabee, seconded by Counselor Blough. Any discussion? Tammy, will you call the roll, please?
Counselor Roberts.
Yes.
Counselor Cook.
Yes.
Counselor Blough.
Yes.
Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Counselor Huckabee.
Yes.
Counselor Garlington.
Yes.
Mayor Milch.
Yes, the ordinance is adopted unanimously, so there's no need for a second reading. It becomes law. Thank you to the committee, the advisor, the ad hoc tree, tree board for their work on this and city staff and Public Works for all their help. And Chad, to your office for putting it into the legalese that we hate to read, but that we really rely on in order to have good, clear regulations in our city. So thank you. Okay, we we move now to our added agenda item for tonight, which is to approve a contract between the city of Gladstone and Braun Construction. Administrator Bets.
Thank you. All of you should have a copy of a staff report to read from and a copy of a sample contract. Just to give you a little bit of background on this, what we're asking for is for you to allow me to negotiate a contract with Braun Construction to repair a sewer line at Fairfield, West Fairfield and Barton. West has been updating their electrical equipment, automatic controls onsite at the Gladstone Pump Station, which is located at Barton, 391 West Clackamas Boulevard. During the corrective work, they discovered that there was large river rocks entering their pump station. And with the video camera, we can now trace that back to where that's coming from. They determined that the city sewer pipe is severely offset at a large joint. I included a picture so you could see the severity of the issue that we're dealing with and the size of the river rock that is getting into our pipes. City needs to fix this as soon as possible, so I worked with City Attorney Jacobs to create a sole source, defining this as an emergency. And we also have findings in the contract for that. What I'm asking for is the city council to authorize me to negotiate a contract with Braun Construction. It will not be $75,000. We are looking at about $43,000 plus a 20% contingency. So we will be well underneath that amount. But again, looking for approval to move forward. They would like to get this work started in the next couple of weeks, which in government terms is an emergency work order, and we expect that they will be finished by the end of this month, the first part of December to do that. There are some nuances attached to this that I learned today in regards to having to abandon a smaller line underneath the utilities. And so Public Works is working diligently to abandon probably about six properties off of that that line so that Braun Construction can then go in and and do the repairs. So that is the work that we need to do. Again, as you start looking, videoing your pipes, we never know what we're going to find. I would not be surprised if there were many more areas in Gladstone with these deficiencies. But this is one that we really need to get fixed as soon as possible.
Those of us who have been reading the Public Works monthly reports over the years know that this historically, we always find something when we're doing something else. And this is one more example of that. Thank you for explaining the 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 option to do assault to to sole source the contracting of this rather than going out for bids in an emergency situation. Explain a little bit more about, you use the term abandoned. That doesn't mean that we're going to have six homeowners who have no water service. Explain a little bit what that means, a little more detail, so it's clear.
It means that we have to move them over to a different line. So there might be a service interruption, but it won't be for an exterior pen extended period of time to do that. But we also have to be careful that we don't blow our system as we're moving them. So you can't move all of them at at one time.
Okay.
And so there'll be notice is to the property owners working through that, but they really shouldn't see a big interruption in their service.
Very good. Thanks for that clarification. Abandoned doesn't mean we're abandoning them perfectly permanently. They were just abandoning them from this particular line, but there is another line that will, that will serve them.
Can I ask one?
Yes, Counselor Garland.
I was just wondering, does the amount of money you're talking about cover the repair of the street and or sidewalk that needs to be done?
It it doesn't, I think, going to involve any sidewalk. But the reason why we want the contingency is because there is a crack in the manhole. And if they start digging in there and that manhole is completely severed, they need the ability then to replace that part. So we've been working with them diligently today to try to make sure that the cost is covering all of that, which is why the city attorney recommended and not to exceed $75,000. Because we don't want to come back to you and have to negotiate anything. But again, we expect this to be well within probably $50,000, $55,000.
Noted. Thank you.
All right, I think citizens have seen the Braun Construction vehicles throughout the city the last several months. They're they're our contract firm for inflow and infiltration projects and contracted a much higher amount than this. But they're here, they know our system, they're good to work with, and this looks like a good approach. So would someone like to make a motion?
I make a motion that we approve a contract between the city and Braun Construction for the emergency sewer line repair at West Fairfield and Barton, negotiated by the city administrator, which is not to exceed $75,000.
I'll second.
All right, moved by Counselor Garland, seconded by Counselor Alexander. Any further discussion or input from counselors?
I do have one question for City Attorney Jacobs. Are you fine with that motion? Or would you like additional language in that motion that clarifies due to emergency conditions? Or Ashley had recommended some of that verbiage in the motion, so I just wanted to make sure you're comfortable with that.
Yeah, I I think it's fine. It's based on everything you just discussed and we added that language to the recitals of the contract itself. And so typically we just refer to that in the recitals as was listing it. And so since we listed it there, I think we're okay as it's been worded.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, so the motion is in. Like Tammy, will you call the roll, please?
Counselor Garlington.
Yes.
Counselor Huckabee.
Yes.
Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Counselor Blough.
Yes.
Counselor Cook.
Yes.
Counselor Roberts.
Yes.
Mayor Milch.
Yes, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, staff, for your quick work on this and let's hope we don't find too many of these, but at least we we know how to handle it. All right, that was our new item 12. We go back to our original item 12, which is now item 13, regarding the legislative priorities for the League of Oregon Cities.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, City Council. Several of us attended the League of Oregon Cities Conference and it was in September. Or excuse me, it was in October. And in your staff report, you will see that the League of Oregon Cities announced their focus. I thought it was great that most of ours were voted on statewide there. So their infrastructure funding, behavioral health enhancements, cybersecurity and privacy, 2025 transportation package and operator and training apprenticeship. So Counselor Roberts, you were right on with making sure that that was a priority and the state agreed with you. So Counselor Huckabee, Counselor Alexander, Counselor Blough and Counselor Garlington and I attended the conference and I just didn't know if anybody wanted to summarize their experience. I had a couple of thoughts I would share at the end on a class that I attended, but I will let them go first.
All right, would anyone who attended like to share a little something with the? Counselor Huckabee, I see your light on.
Make sure you say that City Attorney Jacobs' session was the best session at the League of Oregon Cities Conference.
The session is on my list. I will say that.
All right.
So Counselor Blough and I were able to go on a tour through Sisters. And the main point or building that we visited was Sisters Makers Place. And it was, it was really, really cool. The city is leasing out this building at a very low rate to personal entrepreneurs who are making their product and are able to sell it. It's phenomenal. They have multiple different spaces. I think they had microgreens, they had candle making. I'm probably forgetting something, but it was, it was really, really cool and a place for community to come together and grow. Also on Sisters was, their their town center is so amazing. I don't know if you guys have been to Sisters lately. I was, I was very much envious and in awe. They have a great place right in the middle of town where they have a stage, they have play equipment for the kids, they have tables, they have food trucks, they also have a building that I believe might have been a brewery restaurant. And it was, it's all part of their UGB funds, so that was excellent. I also really enjoyed my conversation with the mayor of Sisters on the way back. He has a solid commitment to supporting Sisters houseless population. And I think it's definitely a method that other cities should look at. His compassion, it was, it was touching. We also went on a UGB tour of Bend. Bend has a lot more money than us in revenue, so I'll preface with that. But they're doing some amazing things out there. They are focusing a lot on low income housing. And one thing that's really superb about what they're doing is it will stay that way for 50 years, which is not, not the average way that that works. We also stopped at a brewery there too and, oh, rewind a bit. We also went to Sisters Coffee Roastery Place, which was very, very cool. Let's see. It was really great to network with other city leaders and learning how they address issues. I think one common theme that counselors come back with from this conference is Gladstone is just kicking butt. We're doing amazing things here and I'm so happy with our city staff and we're just doing great here and I'm very, very glad to be a part of it. The session that City Attorney Jacobs presented at was addressing hate speech in council meetings. We have had to flirt with that in previous years. I am very excited for us to take a look at Florence's city norms and our city charter and city rules to see how we can circumvent this in the future. Shall it ever become an issue? And one of those big things was Zoom bombing where they just log on to Zoom and they just hate speech, hate speech, hate speech. And making sure that everybody has controls, the proper people have controls to silence them and remove them from the meeting. We did review some videos of other council meetings that were, I mean, some of them almost left me in tears. They were terrible, terrible. So I'm looking forward to working on that on our goal session, goal setting sessions later or early next year. I think that's all.
All right, we can move down the row. Counselor Alexander, you were there as well?
Yeah, I went on the same tour that that Counselor Blough and and Huckabee went on and it was neat. It was to see, they've got a lot of development going on out there. I mean, you're driving and you're it's like just nothing. And then all of a sudden you see just pipes and equipment there. Oh, we're putting 50,000 homes there, you know, I mean, they got little towns and and it's just the towns wouldn't have set up until they they got the okay from the people that they're going to put the homes there. And so that was neat to go on that and it was a pub tour. We got to stop at the pub and drink and have beer and stuff. And I went, the next one I went on was the smoke jumpers at the Redland Airport. And that Redland Airport is going to be huge. It's it's second biggest besides Portland right now. And they've got a $90 million project and they had it up on the board and you can see it, 10 new terminals. You know, and the smoke jumpers have been out of there. When we were there, they were having their birthday. It's been from 1964 on that day. They'd been there that long. And it showed how they jump on their planes and they can be right up into over Idaho or Washington and and jump and take care of these fires and the the Redman Airport is gonna, it's already got Alaska on board and it goes to these things like I was explaining, it's like a speed dating. He said you get 15 minutes to sit down with an airlines like United or, you know, Frontier and you present your package and then they will call you back if they want and they're trying to get all the airlines they can to get in there. They had a brand new fire truck. I'd only seen, never seen it before and they'd only seen two of them. And it was pretty neat. So and then besides that, just, I mean, it was put together really well. The main speaker was was very inspirational. He was great and just like Counselor Huckabee is saying, you, I sat there and just I'd walk up to four or five people. I didn't even look at their name. Where are you from? Oh, we're from here. And you sit there and have a conversation for an hour with them. It was great. You can network. It was, it was amazing. I got a lot of cards, gave out some of mine, so it's a good thing. But like Counselor Huckabee also said, Gladstone's, we're up there. For our our city, we're doing good. We're doing great things. So that was it. And I would recommend anybody that gets a chance to go to one of those, go. Thank you.
All right, Counsel Blough, you represented us as well.
Yeah, it was, it was really a very educational, especially for, you know, somebody who's new into city government. I really learned a lot. I think my favorite bit was probably, not to plug everything, but the hate speech one. And really maybe thinking about putting a review of our rules and regs and maybe some training for our committee members so that they know how to handle this in the future. Just, I think that that might be a really good use of some of our time in the future. And then you know, the the tour of Sisters was quite amazing and their maker space really reminded me that, you know, we haven't determined what we're doing with the old library yet. And that, you know, that could potentially, you know, be a multi-use community space. It, you know, especially a way for startup, small businesses that might locate to Gladstone and that would really help, you know, our our downtown, our, you know, our vibrancy.
locate to Gladstone and that would really help, you know, our, our downtown, our, you know, our vibrancy. And so I think that's also something to think about when we start to determine what happens with that space. Um, and then the, the last thing that, uh, I hadn't really, um, hadn't been aware of was recreational immunity, um, which is a strange term, um, but can be really important to cities. Um, recreational immunity is the idea that, um, you are not, the city is not held liable for accidents that happen on public spaces. So if you are walking in a park and you fall down and break your leg, that the city can't be sued for that. Um, and it's apparently not very popular with, um, court systems. And so there's going to be probably another review of that. And I think that's something that, you know, we as a city should pay attention to because the liability is quite, quite high. Um, and other than that, it was just really great to interact with other cities and it really did say, you know, that Gladstone is doing really well. We are doing really well financially. We're doing, you know, all of the, you know, the things that we need to do as a city. So, yeah.
All right. And, uh, the fourth member of the council who was in attendance was Counselor Garlington.
Well, I just want to, first of all, say thank you very much to our city staff for getting us great, a great hotel room. It's so much easier to be where the conference is. Um, I always feel bad for people that have to get up in the morning and drive to, you know, find a parking space and we get to walk. Although we did walk Friday morning in the snow, um, it was quite cold, uh, but we had a great time. Thank you to our staff. Haley, for getting that put together for us, getting all of us rooms, making sure that we had all of our ducks in a row. It was seamless. I appreciate that. Um, our own incredible Chad Jacobs gave a great speech. Yes, I'll agree with everyone. Um, Counselor Huckabee, you talked about, you know, being proactive and getting some of those rules and regulations changed. And, and it's kind of like a lot of the things that we do here, we may not ever use it, but it's always important to have that stuff finished and in writing. It, it just doesn't leave anything for question. It's where it is. Um, your entire, um, I'm talking to him like he's looking at me, but, um, Mr. Jacobs, your, your entire, uh, presentation was really good. A lot of people learned a lot of things. And I even had people come up to me after the fact and say, wow, you guys are lucky to have that group. You know, and I would, of course I plugged and said, that's our, that's our legal team, you know? So anyway, that was really good. Patty Mulvihill gave a great speech to the councillors opening morning. Um, it was, uh, succinct. It was, uh, got people in line. It was, um, new for people that were new to council. It was a, a reminder to those of us that have been here a while and then also bringing up things that happen every year as laws and rules change for every city in Oregon. The biggest takeaway from, uh, LOC for me this year was, uh, some personal things that, not personal things, I hate saying it like that. Uh, I guess what I want to say is how I, uh, how I might present myself better, how I can work on myself better and how I can come up with ideas for my city, for the groups that I work with and, uh, using the people in the state of Oregon that are also elected officials to be part of what we do because we are part of a fabulous state. And it's, uh, really good to be a part of that. I didn't get to go on any, uh, uh, tours, but I did get a shirt from the Jumpers Academy from Counselor Alexander, who brought me back a consolation prize, which I really did appreciate. Uh, everything else was lovely. The League of Oregon Cities put on a great event. Uh, I did miss our own representatives, um, presentation, uh, and the reason for that is because I had, uh, put together a different presentation in another room that happened to be at the same darn time. And I kind of sort of had to be with the people that I invited. So, but the good news is for everyone except the, um, or with the exception of the, uh, the tours, everything is online. If there was something here that you heard that you would like to go back and listen to, most everything with the exception of the power outage was taped. Um, so it, it, you know, everything turned out really well and, and, and after the power outage came back on, but you can go online and see a lot of those. And if something, you know, might so, if somebody that's coming into our council in January had, if, if I had to give them, uh, a note of things to go see, I think some of the presentations that people were talking about here up here are good ones to go and see. Are, are go, good ones to go back and listen to because there is so much to learn from them. And, uh, the LOC staff has so much to offer all of us, uh, as elected officials. So thank you again to our staff for getting us there.
Can I jump in real quick?
You may.
I was able to attend Anessa Hartman's, um, I believe it was called something to the effect of government to government, working with tribal nations. Um, it was really, really good. There was a lot of history, um, presented at that work session. Um, one neighboring mayor wanted it to rush along, um, but, uh, Representative Hartman reminded her that we have to lay this groundwork for people to understand how we, you know, move on next. Um, she was phenomenal as always. I was very, very happy I went.
Did they tape that one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I haven't gotten back, but, okay. Thank you.
And Administrator Betts, uh, you accompanied our councillors. Anything you want to add?
And I just want to say, there was one session that all five of us sat together at and attended and that was to listen to our city attorney. It was like we were proud parents watching our son give the val, a la victorian speech. We were, we were very proud, Chad. Um, you did a great job. It was a large crowd and we did learn a lot. And I think that we will review our council rules from the city of Bend and Hillsborough and incorporate some things that, that we can improve on. The only session I wanted to highlight was, um, the one in regards to property tax 101. It was histories and opportunities for change. And is there a palatable, uh, revenue reform? You know, cities need to find more money and how are we going to get that? And the League of Oregon Cities is really focused on looking at our property tax structure. Um, they made it very clear in the survey that they did, uh, statewide is that there is no, um, there's no way a sales tax will ever pass in Oregon. People just do not want it. Uh, respondents feel disconnected from city government and questioned its effectiveness. Voters do not have a relationship with their government. Um, and most importantly, people believe that the cities have enough money, but we don't spend it the way people think we should. And so no matter how much outreach you think you are doing, it ultimately comes back to, people think government already has enough money. They just don't do what you're supposed to do with it. So, um, that would be one session I would recommend for those that didn't attend to go back and, and maybe revisit that.
And Administrator Betts, uh, going off that last comment of people not thinking we spend the money we, we should. What's the subject of your article in the city newsletter for the next, next month?
Uh, it is our investment in infrastructure.
All right.
It is because, uh, you have a utility rate increase coming before you December, just like we do every year, a 4% increase. And I think it's important that, that people understand where that money is being spent and how it's been spent in our infrastructure. So.
I, I look at social media and see people say, gee, we pay all this money. We don't do anything with it. And we, you know, we took a 1.7 million contract to work on inflow, infiltration, infiltration. We paid many thousands more for other pipe cleanings and, and things along the way. Uh, we are putting that money to good use. And there are cities who are completely lacking in a water system or sanitary sewer system altogether. Uh, for whom that would be a multi-year, multi-million dollar investment to just get it started. And we are very fortunate to be in the region served by Water and Environment Services of Plaquemines County where much of this infrastructure is in place. But it needs to be maintained. It needs to be upgraded. And, uh, you know, and, and faults in the system need to be addressed as quickly as they can. And I'm glad that we live in a city where we have the resources and the commitment to make sure that that work is happening. So thank you all for, for attending and for learning from other cities. Sometimes, uh, seeing what small cities across the state are struggling with can be a very sobering experience when you go to a conference like this. Uh, and you recognize, uh, what we have in this city that really, uh, you know, sets us uh, apart from those who, who deal with bigger struggles. And also you get that envy of the, of the cities that have that big property tax revenue that enables them to do much more. But we find a way in Gladstone to invest in ourselves, uh, with the limited resources we have in the way that, that we feel best serves the community as a whole. So I'm grateful. Yes.
So the League of Oregon Cities will have a spring conference and those that went know that it's in North Bend. North Bend is down near Coos Bay, not where we were before. So that will be the spring conference. And then this next year's conference, the hundred years, the hundred year anniversary of LOC will be in Portland. So that will be a really exciting, big conference. And I think they're going to have a lot of, you know, really good things going on. I hope that everybody who's, uh, sitting on council will get to go to that. And then January 28th is City Day at the Capitol. And that's an all-day event. Lots of things going on. You get to speak with your representatives. You get to go into different, um, you know, breakout type sessions and things like that. And that's just, it's during the week. Yes, I understand that. But it is just a one-day event. So that, those three items, if people mark them on the calendar.
Well, thank you. I think, okay. We're going back, um, at the awards thing, and I think you can all pack me up on this. Every award that got given to a, a city, to their administrator, our administrator had already done. Gladstone has done it. And they were, these people were getting awards for doing what we've already done here. So that was, that said a lot. I think, you know, Jackie should have been recognized at that place.
Please, no, no, no. But thank you.
Well, having it here in Portland will certainly benefit those of us who are on a short umbilical cord. You know, I never drive farther south than the Winco in Oregon City. So, uh, you're not going to find me in Bennett Coos Bay or Klamath Falls or any of those places. Uh, but, uh, maybe, uh, something around here. I might even make an appearance. So, uh, I don't think we have any business carry forward. So we move for business from the audience. Do we have any requests, uh, Tammy, for?
We did not.
General comments. Okay, good. Uh, so business from the council. We've heard a lot from all of you already. Um, but, uh, let's, let's give other folks a chance to, uh, bring some things. So I'm going to start maybe with Counselor Roberts. And I'll work my way this way and around. And, uh, so, Counselor Roberts, anything you'd like to share for the good of the order?
I just checked my calendar. Really nothing. No, it's been good. Just been, uh, trying to get out there and attend other, uh, meetings, meetings that, uh, we're partners with. Oak Lodge, the, um, 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 Sunrise Water Authority. Couldn't think of their name. I kept trying to think of the acronyms. Um, just trying to get out and attend different meetings and get out there in the community. So, but nothing to report. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for, for being mindful of the water issues and how they affect us and representing us. Counselor Cook.
Yeah, I have, um, an issue that a couple, a couple residents brought forward. Um, so, and, and before I kind of, you know, bring this forward to the council, I just want to say that the, um, the issue that I'm bringing forward, I have absolutely no, um, concerns about the positive intentions of the people involved. Um, I just want us to have an open conversation about how we want to move forward. Um, so I heard a couple, uh, prior to this last month, I've heard concerns from residents around the accuracy and the cultural appropriateness of some of the content that is present in the Gladstone City Newsletter. And that is really coming from content that's provided by folks from outside the city. So those concerns were not, um, directed at content that was provided by, um, staff, but really, you know, concerns about content that's provided by residents of the city, um, not city staff. Um, I've heard this feedback for a year and a half or so. Um, really hasn't come to the point where I, I think we need to consider our policies until this last month. Um, this last month, we had an article, um, in the Gladstone Newsletter, um, that, you know, mistakes will happen, but I think that this, um, is a consequential mistake. Um, and I think that the city should really consider how we are allowing folks from outside city staff and elected officials to present information in the Gladstone City Newsletter. So I want to give you the example and then kind of talk about, um, my ask, the TLDR here. My ask is that we as a council talk about, um, setting some standards for content in the Gladstone City Newsletter, specifically content that's not provided by staff. So, um, the specific concern that I heard from multiple residents is that in the Gladstone Back Then section of the Gladstone City Newsletter, um, there is a, um, a quick paragraph um, where, uh, questions are being answered. So the question is, did the Ku Klux Klan burn a cross in Gladstone Park? Was it during the Chautauqua? Um, reply, according to our records, this never happened. While the Chautauqua gave a voice to many different religious, political, educational and cultural ideas, there's no record of the Ku Klux Klan ever holding a rally in Gladstone. They didn't arrive in Portland until the mid 1920s, which was the same time the Gladstone Chautauqua was winding down. Um, this is just like pretty easily disproven by anyone who, um, has any knowledge of the, the history of Gladstone. Um, I, I think that the reason that this is important is, you know, as a council, we've had several discussions about former instances of racism, discrimination and injustice in our city and how that has reverberated today. Um, so I think it's important to make sure that we're not erasing our history and that we're being honest about what has happened here and what continues to happen in Gladstone. Um, so I think just to kind of set the record straight, it took me about 90 seconds to Google this. Um, in the Banner Courier, which is a newspaper that existed in Oregon City, um, the front page of the Banner Courier on Thursday, August 3rd, 1922. Um, the very front page has an article, "The Ku Klux Klan Initiates Over 100 Candidates." Don't worry, this is fast. Um, Gladstone Park was the scene last Saturday night of a ceremonial, unusual and impressive. Lined up on the ballfield section of the park, the crowd estimated at 3,000 persons, 3,000 persons in 1922, was kept within the space allotted them by a line of guards clad in the white robes of the Order. The initiation ceremony was conducted in front of a fiery cross, the symbol of the Order. And close beside the cross was a large American flag illuminated by red torches and spotlights from a circle of auto cars. Upon the formation of a hollow square by the members, the initiatory class occupied the center and between two lines of a Portland degree team. The initiates were questioned as to qualifications of birth, religion and American citizenship. They took oath to uphold the Constitution, to perpetuate the free public schools, the separation of church and state, to guard the home, to cherish liberty and the right to the pursuit of happiness. Dr. Lawyer of Portland, lecturer for the Klan for this domain, delivered an address to the initiated in which he urged them to be true Klansmen, to uphold the principles of the organization and bring new members into the Klan and into the women's organization, the Ladies of the Invisible Empire. The ceremony closed and opened with prayer. The 110 members who took the obligation at this time will be among the charter members when the organization in this county receives its charter. So, um, you know, when we're having, less than a hundred years later, when we're having conversations about the challenges that we're facing as a city, I think, again, it's important to understand the true history of who we are. And I think, you know, um, you can argue back and forth about what's right and what's wrong and morals and values. But I think what we can't argue about is just the veracity of the historical record. Um, and so I think if, if the city is dedicating resources to getting information out into the community, we have an obligation to make sure that information is correct. Um, this is just the most recent, potentially in, in my opinion, the most egregious example of a time where city resources, the Gladstone City Newsletter, has been used to perpetuate a misinterpretation and honestly, just, um, a complete misrepresentation of Gladstone history. So, um, we're not going to solve this tonight. This is not on the agenda. I don't expect us to solve this tonight. But I do want to make sure that this is put on a future agenda. And the question is, can we set standards and expectations for newsletter content that's written outside of city staff? I don't think it's reasonable to ask Administrator Betts, I don't think it's reasonable to ask city staff to proofread and fact-check every article, every piece of information that's put forward. I think we need to have just clear standards on what is and is not acceptable to reprint and give city voice to. Um, some suggestions I have, maybe requiring specific citations for all claims made. Or only allowing direct excerpts from books or newspapers. So maybe just reprinting articles or excerpts from the past. Um, or even just discontinuing non-city speech in the newsletter. Um, I also think it is important to issue a correction in the next issue of the newsletter so that we are mitigating any harm done by misrepresenting Gladstone City history. Um, again, I don't think there was any malice in this misrepresentation, but I do think we as a city have an obligation to make sure that we're using taxpayer money to tell the truth and not to misrepresent our. to tell the truth and not to misrepresent our history. So my ask, uh, is to city Administrator Betts and then also city council, um, can we discuss this in the future? Unfortunately, looking forward at the December meeting, that is a joint session with the Planning Commission.
That is, uh, uh, December 17th. You have a meeting on December 10th.
Got it. Oh, yeah. The one with the giant huge agenda attached, Jack.
Yes. So my, my question to you, um, respectfully, your, your term ends.
Yep, absolutely.
Is this something that you would like to do before the end of your term? Or would you like this to be discussed at council goal-setting and addressed? Do you give some more guidance on that?
I think my, the, the only piece that I feel very firm on is, um, uh, issuing a retraction urgently, like on the next available opportunity, issuing a correction to the information provided.
Referring to what you just cited?
Yes.
Okay.
And citing, citing sources as well, which was not done in the original content. Um, and then I think I am totally happy to have this done without me because you're absolutely right. I'm not going to be on council. Um, I will be tucking my kids in at night on my own. Um, so, uh, I'm happy to have the new council address this issue. I think that's fine. I think the, what makes me feel that way is a confidence that you guys are going to take this seriously and make sure that we fulfill our obligation to make sure that the city is only issuing resources and giving a platform to individuals and organizations that are presenting truthful information. So I guess my, my question to you guys is, are we all on board with that?
Yes, and I would just like to add, I would, um, also like to include an apology for our part and, um, allowing that information to be disseminated.
Yeah, I agree.
All right. Thank you for sharing. Uh, did, did you have another item besides, uh, that one? That was your?
That was it.
All right. Thank you. We'll continue to move down. Counselor Blough, anything to add besides your report on the, uh?
Nope, I don't have anything else to add.
Okay. Counselor Alexander?
I have nothing either.
Counselor Huckabee?
Geez, it's just me talking tonight. That's okay though. Um, let's see, I have a couple of things. I just want to say congratulations again to Lieutenant McNabb and Sergeant Orr. Very welcome to have them aboard and promoted. Um, I wanted to call out Indigenous Peoples' Day at the Community Center that happened, um, last month. It was phenomenal and I really encourage the community to go back and read the Community Center monthly report about that. Um, look up the resources and the two individuals that spoke and also the award winners for art, which was beautiful. Um, I also wanted to encourage that we all, um, show up and support those who might be feeling vulnerable after last week. Um, community is very important at this time. I have two more things, I promise. I also want to, um, looking forward at our 2025 conferences. Um, I hope that all counselors going forward, um, will make a commitment to represent Gladstone in a respectful and dignified manner. Other than that, I hope everybody has a great holiday with their family and loved ones.
All right. We'll move down to the other end. Counselor Garland.
Um, I just have a couple of things. Um, October 26th and then again on November 9th, the Gladstone Nature Park, the Friends and many, many other volunteers were able to plant hundreds of natives to aid in the restoration of the native habitats within the park. I want to thank all the volunteers for their continued work there. October 28th was the first Clackamas County Library Meeting in our new library building. Uh, Mayor Milch dropped by to sit in our meeting. Uh, and, uh, we got updates on both buildings and like our building, you can get online now and watch them build the other building there in, um, on McLaughlin. So they talked about the hiring of new employees and they have had quite a few turnovers in the, the, in the last probably six months. I could even say a year because we don't meet every month, but, um, not, not for anything malicious, just people finding a new job, moving, you know, their, their lives change and things change. And so they've had a lot of, um, turnover in the libraries. Um, they've got new schedules as everyone has probably been to the library and went, oh, I guess it's not open yet because I've done that. And then, um, they've, uh, put in some new, uh, schedules for reading and things like that for the kids. And they're doing a lot in Gladstone, more than they're doing in the North, or in the Oak Grove space right now just because, um, they're getting the people. Um, and I think everybody that was at the meeting was in agreement that they're really making great use of that new facility. So that was really good. October 28th was National First Responders Day. I would like to recognize the brave men and women who dedicate their lives to protecting and serving our communities in times of crisis. For those that care for us, those that have lost their lives for us and the families that support you, my sincere thanks. I was happy to hear despite the weather that the Gladstone Goblin Gathering was a great success. Thank you to all the sponsors and everyone who handed out candy, the city, the businesses and the individuals as well. Thank you to Haley and Marcy in administration for organizing a wonderful community event. I can confirm that this year I had over 50 kids arrive at my door. And, um, I think that's more than I've had in the last five years. So the kids really got out there and I think it helped that maybe there was no school on Friday. So those kids really made, made some good use of their time that night. Uh, Monday, November 11th was Veterans Day. And as a member of the family of Navy wives and Navy mothers, I extend my sincere thanks to all our men and women in uniform, serving our country as an honor. And to those who have served, and we are blessed to know many, again, I say thank you. Uh, on Thursday, November, I want to back up just one second and say thank you also to Counselor Alexander, who is a vet. Thank you. Uh, Thursday, November 21st at Tuck Willa Springs, our Tuck Willa Dinners Group will be co-hosting along with the Tuck Willa staff and Home Forward staff, a Thanksgiving celebration for the residents. Contact me if you would like to help. The Winter Market at the Community Festival is happening Saturday, December 7th. Uh, the place will be full of talented individuals ready to help you with your holiday shopping. So see if you combine a little time to stop by. Also on December 7th is our very own tree lighting event at 5 o'clock. And they turn that on right at 5. Am I correct? Do you have?
It starts at 5 and, and usually it, the, the, the lighting happens almost immediately. Yes.
Okay.
It depends on, uh, whether they develop any more programming. Uh, in past, we've sometimes had choirs and other things. So we'll see how it goes.
Okay. Rain or shine though.
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Or snow.
Yeah, exactly. On Thursday, December 19th at Tuck Willa Springs, we'll be hosting our Christmas Dinner and Cookie Box Event. Um, I am looking for more donations for the cookie event. It was a big hit last year and we want to make sure that everybody in the facility, um, had a little piece of the holiday spirit. So contact me again if you can help. City Day at the Capitol will be January 28th and Thanksgiving is in just a few weeks. I want to wish everyone a very blessed day. Remember, no drinking and driving to anyone out there, even thinking about it. Call someone. Do not drink and drive. Uh, I want to make sure everyone has a Thanksgiving filled with good food, an abundance of peace and God's blessings to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you, all of you, uh, uh, the counselors who participated in the LOC Conference. As I say, that's, um, I don't always have the time to get to all the things, but I, I'm grateful that what you bring back benefits all of us by your, your good sharing and, uh, and the LOC's willingness to make those things available to people. Um, we have a wonderful community here, the opening of the new library. Uh, and that model that we created when, when we settled, when they made the settlement of the library, uh, one library, two buildings, uh, is, is something that ties us very closely to the community of, uh, what we call Jennings or Oak Lodge, which is Oak Grove and Jennings Lodge to the north of us. And I always felt we have a, a good tie, uh, to, to those communities and to Milwaukee and to Oregon City. We have this hope of a bridge that'll connect us to Oregon City with new things happening there. We really are a local region that, uh, depends on one another for our economic strength and development and, uh, you know, the, the programs that we offer to enrich the lives of children through the library, uh, well, people of all ages through the library. Uh, I'm grateful to people who stood for election this, this last, uh, week or so. Uh, and we elected someone with library experience and, uh, interest. Uh, Maria Mitchell will be joining our council next year. And, uh, with the new library in the city, I can't think of a better qualified person to bring, uh, expertise to us. Uh, Counselor Garlington was re-elected. Counselor, uh, Alexander and, and Counselor Blough. Uh, as of the, the latest results, they are tied exactly the same number of votes and more ballots will be coming in and counted. So we can't call that one yet. Too close to call, as they say. Um, and Andrew Labonte, who ran unopposed for seat number four, was elected. He is an experienced planning commissioner, uh, and has served the city in numerous capacities. So, uh, leadership at the local level will continue into the new year with some new faces, some old faces. And, uh, we will continue to try to work together and to recognize, uh, some of the things that are really, maybe we don't think of them as part of our mission, yet if we're sensitive to them, really, uh, influence the way that we are as a city and how protective we are of people's individual rights and their feelings and their life experiences. So Counselor Cook, I appreciate what you brought to us tonight, uh, and, uh, and that others concurred in that. Um, I think we should, uh, you know, be very sensitive that in a diverse community, there are many ways that things we do in the city affect people directly, indirectly, big ways, small ways. Um, but we should try to continue to make this a community that strives to be a place where people feel they belong and to avoid anything that makes people feel perhaps they don't. Uh, because we want them all to feel that they do, as I hope you all do. Thank you all for coming tonight. If there's, is there anything else to come before us?
Next election results will be on the 19th, by the way.
Okay. All right. Um, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All right. It's been moved by Counselor Huckabee, seconded by Counselor Roberts. Uh, Tammy, will you call the roll, please?
Counselor Huckabee?
Yes.
Counselor Alexander?
Yes.
Counselor Blough?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Roberts?
Yes.
Counselor Garlington?
Yes.
Mayor Milch?
Yes. We are adjourned at, uh, looking at the clock, I believe it's 9:12 PM. Thank you.